Fourth already occurred, but you wouldn't know it by looking outside. Um, except maybe that it's getting dark. The weather is certainly not indicative of October, though I was reminded the other day that um, it actually was a little snowy in March, so I guess we're just shifting our months a little bit. We do have a quorum, but we're still missing a couple council members, so I'm gonna pause for just a moment and see if we can get them here. See.
I see Latricia in the attendee list.
Yes, Latricia, Latricia is, if we can promote her first and then our guest, that would be great. Okay, and there's Navara. So, I think we're all present and accounted for, but that's what roll call is for, so um, I think we will go ahead and get started. Carrie, if you could do the roll call, please, that would be great. Will do. Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember French?
Present.
Councilmember McCon?
Here.
Councilmember Sherman Warren?
Good evening.
Councilmember Suggs?
Here.
Manager West?
Present.
Attorney Moore?
Good evening all.
All right, thank you. Um, we will um go to the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can mute yourselves, we will um say that right now. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Um, we have the privilege this evening of being joined by um, um, Laura Alwaklalum Chairwoman, uh Tribal Chairwoman Frances Charles. She is joining us to receive our um October twenty twenty-two Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. Thank you so much for being here, and I'm gonna go ahead and read it and then give you an opportunity to say a few words if you would like. So let me pull it up here. Sorry, I'm getting some notifications from my computer. So we have a proclamation recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city strives to promote tolerance, understanding and friendship, and to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination. And whereas the city of Port Angeles recognizes that it sits on Klallum ancestral lands and recognizes that Klallum people have lived on this land since time immemorial. And whereas the city values the many contributions Indigenous peoples have made to our community with their knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural influences that have shaped the character of our city. Whereas the city of Port Angeles recognizes that systemic racism toward Indigenous peoples perpetuates he- high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating health, education and social crisis. And whereas the city of Port Angeles joins the state and a growing number of cities that have permanently recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, creating an opportunity to promote appreciation, tolerance, understanding, friendship and partnerships among all peoples. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a day to learn, to observe, to create and to connect. The Port Angeles School District's curriculum fosters an education that is diverse and that honors Klallum culture, among many others. The city recognizes Portan- uh Peninsula College is offering Klallum language courses. This, along with work done by the district, will continue to support students' learning through enrichment activities and a rich curriculum. Whereas, on July twenty-first, twenty twenty, the City Council adopted ordinance three-six-six-zero, adding chapter one-point-three-zero to the Port Angeles Municipal Code, declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles. This ordinance will long be a valuable addition to the code, and we look forward to paying our respects to the historical importance this day represents, not only of the- on the day of, but every day. Now therefore, I Kate Dexter, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby recognize October ten, twenty twenty-two, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles, and encourage all to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Indigenous peoples of our region, to learn more about the history of Indigenous peoples and their cultures, and to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of our Indigenous community. Thank you, and uh thank you Frances for being here this evening. Um, I'd be happy to turn it over to you for a few words if you would, um, we'd be honored to hear from you.
Sure. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
I really wanna say thank you to the City Council and to the members that are on, staff that are on um the conference here today, tonight, in regards to that, but really, thank you for acknowledging the Indigenous Day um for our people just as well, because it doesn't only just affect us, it affects across the nations and international regions just as much. But really, really, i- it's about the kids. I- it's about the future of our generations. Um, we are working with the younger generations in the different school arenas to where they themselves are really starting to recognize the importance of their heritage, their history and their culture and their values of who they are. I know just by talking with a few of them that they're really looking to help educate not only themselves of all ages and all grades, um but also to the fact of who their families are and where they come from, but the family ties that they have uh locally as well as internationally. But it's really important in in that manner, because they're, the the kids themselves are starting to strive and really stand up for themselves about what their cultures and what their values are and uh um they're doing billboards, they're doing posters, they're doing regalia again and and trying to get into the strive of because of the COVID and the pandemic that we had, um getting back into the culture values of it, and it it's something that is really heartwarming to see the real young ones take notice and take pride in that uh rem of it just as much, and my hands really go up to all of you for the recognition that you're providing to the Indian Indigenous nations out there, because it is an important value to all of us and being a partner um and collaborating with one another, that's that's the important values of it as well. So my hands go up to all of you, and uh we look forward to having some discussions and hope to see you guys on the fifteenth um with the invite, and I'm frantically trying to get to that together and and hope to see some of you guys there on uh the activity that's taking place. Hotness and thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you then, and um also, I I know I'm giving a um a welcome at Crab Fest on Saturday, so I look forward to seeing you there as well. Um, it's a good opportunity for people to come down and see the um the drum and singing group. So hopefully some of you will be there.
I'm hoping so, but I've been getting called to go to Washington DC on Friday, so I may and I may not be there.
Okay, well, we'll say hello to the folks you send in your stead.
Definitely, thank you.
For being here. All right, uh let's move on to public comment. Have a good night Frances.
Thank you, Hotness and everybody.
All right. We'll move on to on to public comment. I think there's a slide, if, there it is, wow, that was fast. Um, so if you are an attendee in the meeting, you can simply uh raise your hand with the raise hand feature. There's a picture of it on the screen. Um, it it's a little button, and if you raise your hand, it will show up um for us that you have raised your hand and we'll be able to call on you um to speak, so I will pause just a moment. We do have a public hearing this evening, forgot to mention that. Um, if you are joining the meeting and want to speak to the issue of the utility rates for water, wastewater and medic one, um then that would be during the um public hearing rather than public comment. Um, so I see a hand up, and that is Nina. So Nina, when you are unmuted, um if you can just say quickly, say hello, and then we'll know that we can hear you, and we'll start your timer, and you can uh state your name and whether or not you reside in the city first for the record, that would be great, and you'll have three minutes. So when you're unmuted, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. So great, I'll start. Thank you so much.
Hi, I don't know if it's been announced or not. Uh, I'm sorry, I do live within the city limits. Um, I don't know if it's been announced or not, but have, has the council announced when we're gonna be uh holding open public meetings instead of these online meetings?
We um had a discussion about it last time and are going to keep the rules, the consensus was to keep the rules the same. Um, but we will continue to monitor the situation and we'll certainly let the public know if that changes.
Do you know if uh there's a timeframe on that by chance? Because I know that uh even the governor of the state has said it's no longer a concern.
So that's at the end of October, and we may revisit this again um before then, so um I'd be happy to talk to you more about it offline, um if you're interested.
Okay, thank you. I just, I hadn't heard anything, so I was just wondering.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, anyone else who wishes to speak during the public comment period? Okay, um Carrie, do we have any voicemails?
We do have a voicemail. It is for the public hearing.
Okay, perfect, then we will hold it for that. Um, all right, so let's move on. Um, so, a quick note on the agenda. Um, I wasn't sure how long public comment was going to take, um but we do have a public hearing that should start um at six-thirty or soon after, but I think that probably gives us time to um hear from our other guests, from one of our other guests this evening. We have a lot of guests this evening. Um, Colleen McAleer from the EDC is joining us this evening. Um, Colleen, do you feel like uh if we start now, we have enough time?
Yes.
Overlook that, that's fine too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan really quickly, I think, to introduce you, and then and then we'll go, I mean, we all know who you are, but um we'll let him give a little introduction and then and let then let you um give us your presentation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to introduce Colleen McAleer, the Executive Director for the Clallum County Economic Development Council. And Colleen tonight is going to be presenting to us a number of exciting new programs that the EDC has planned. Uh, joining Colleen, we have Rebecca Miller, who is the new North Olympic Peninsula um procurement technical assistance center program manager and counselor. And we're really happy to have Rebecca with us for the first time in that capacity this evening as well, so Colleen, take it away.
Great, thank you so much, Nathan. I really appreciate it. So I'm gonna try to share.
Colleen, we're making those changes right now. We'll uh promote you to uh presenter, just a moment.
Wonderful, thank you. Hi.
There you go, you should have the um share screen on on your side too.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, so share. So, I'm beginning. Is this working for you? Does everyone see this?
Yes, it looks great.
Okay. So I I'm really uh pleased and thankful for being able to have the opportunity to present your counterparts with you. Um, we've had a lot of things going on, and we've got a lot of big plans, so just really appreciative of the ability to share that with you. Um, so first off, wanted to talk about where your investment from the city of Port Angeles goes, and some programs that we administer and what we plan to also expand in twenty twenty-three. First of all, um I'm gonna cover our work in the pandemic response, our North Olympic Legislative Alliance work, our Conservate Technical Assistance Center um work, the five-year economic plan we've been working on for about a year. Uh, the work around workforce development and housing, childcare, our um effort in communication and trying to be an education hub for our business community, and then all of the business advising that we do in person and virtually. And also, if you have any questions, please, so uh please feel free to stop me and I'm happy to answer. Um, this is a recap of the grants that we administered going back to twenty twenty, um and the different types from Working Washington One to Working Washington Two, Lifeboat One and Two, Community Development Block Grant, uh and then Lifeboat Three, and there were three rounds of that. In twenty twenty-one, we administered two-point-six million dollars in total, a hundred and seventy-six grants, uh the average fourteen thousand eight hundred to different businesses. But in twenty twenty-two, we did round three of the ARPA funds, five-hundred-and-eighty thousand uh that went to forty-four businesses and twenty thousand dollars. So in Lifeboat Three grant, um that I don't think I've updated you on, we processed within the Port Angeles city limits and additional hundred uh one-point-six-one-six million in total, and there were a hundred and twelve businesses. So that's from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The average amount that businesses received within the Port Angeles city limits was about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And just as a side note, by processing these grants, we triggered the federal audit requirement that if a entity receives more than seven hundred thousand dollars, you have to do a formal audit. And uh we successfully passed our audit without any grant funding, so that was a big win for us. We'll continue to do a bunch of these federal programs. Uh, next, I wanna cover our work around the North Olympic Legislative Alliance. Uh, our, the steering committee, which includes um members of council and then also uh City Manager West, sit on that steering committee, and there were three top priorities that were selected. One is based on a white paper that the Clallum D.C. put together, working with a bunch of partners, but that covers state policies that negative impact impoverished rural communities. And those are around issues in training, data procurement, and then also for good measure, we threw in that they need to um for all those reasons, they need to extend the point oh-nine funds that our state or our county receives for economic development purposes, that I know recently, in the last few years, um over five hundred thousand went to the field arts and events hall for their sidewalks and stuff. So it's an important program that helps our communities in a lot of different ways. Also, um, uh Lindsay worked on, in the housing subcommittee, um different policies and positions around housing issues, so thank you for that very in-depth and detailed work that he did. And then the last area of concern is around electrical contractors. Beginning in July first, twenty twenty-three, there is a requirement that any electrical contractor that works in a commercial setting goes through a formal apprenticeship program. There is a union apprenticeship program that is that serves our county, however, there is not one for any of the electrical uh uh trainees that uh want to become commercial electricians. They will have to drive to the closest location of the T L. And that just means that there is not access. There are a hundred and ninety-eight different electrical trainees between Clallum County and Jefferson County, and only ten of those are viewing contractors that use the local uh apprenticeship program. So that's, that's one of a, an example of the training issues. Um, I won't go into that state policy very far, because it is a pretty complex set of issues, and Representative Chapman plans on running a bill. We've been working with the Department of Commerce to write a bill to um to try to address some of these issues. And I'm just really thankful that we've been getting a lot of support from the Washington Economic Development Association and others that uh hadn't realized that these issues are things that make it very difficult for rural communities to thrive. And I do have a white paper, happy to share that with any of you who'd like to talk, if you'd like to talk. Um, next, uh I'm excited, very excited, this is a ten-year program, so I've we've been working on trying to get a Conservate Technical Assistance Center in uh our area. And so we got someone part-time, but we we knew that um our businesses were not getting the support that was needed so that these businesses could uh successfully pursue federal, state and local government contracts or subcontract. The percentage of participation from our local businesses is very low, and our intention is to increase that. So we applied for federal funding. Our state does have a P-TAC program, it's the Washington P-TAC. Um, however, we were unsuccessful for many years in a row trying to get them to give some of the funding to us on Olympic Peninsula, so that we could have a uh counselor here locally. And instead, um we worked with our, with Congressman Palmer, he talked to the Department of Defense and suggested that they open up another regional offer opportunity for our state and a couple other states, and so we were just recently awarded ongoing funding that will be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, it does require a local match, and on one October, we hired Rebecca Miller. So I know Rebecca is with us today. You may know of Rebecca, she um she's a very involved community member. She was formerly the Director of Development for Peninsula for K H O Health. And she also has uh experiencing a vocational technical uh counselor, and um just couldn't be more excited to have her on board. Um, Rebecca, do you wanna say a word of you?
Just one word. I'm super excited. This is really all about how can we make Klallum better, um more economically stable and get some of our workers and businesses uh to keep that money local. So I'm really super happy that I can uh help and um like I said, just really thrilled to be here. So thank you, and I promised only one word, so I'll be quiet.
So we, we've been doing a lot of research in this space and have found that we're mi- really missing out on so many economic opportunities, because we're allowing these very lucrative contracts to be leaked out to the I five corridor in Kiprep County. So next is our five-year economic plan. Uh, we have been doing a lot of work in this space, over five hundred and eight community surveys across our county, over three hundred businesses have been surveyed, and we've grouped those businesses into fourteen clusters. We've partnered with Seminole College in this process, um and are sharing all the raw data with them. And uh we're asking things of these uh businesses about their employees, median wages, revenues, and we're we're taking a look at that in relation to what Bureau of Labor and Statistics shows, what the quarterly census of the employment wages reveal, and then also um a program called InPlan. We've hired Dr. Dan Underwood to do a lot of this analysis for us, and also Ted Tennessee is an expert in surveying with Falltrix, which is considered the gold standard. And all of this information is being fed into a uh our five-year plan, and want to invite everyone tomorrow. Dr. Dan Underwood and Ted Tennessee will be on our EDC coffee chat, Coffee with Colleen at eight AM. So if you can join us, that would be great, and they'll they'll dive into that more thoroughly. Um, workforce development and housing. Uh, we know in order to grow our economy, we are going to have to put a lot of emphasis in ensuring that we have a strong workforce and a workforce in the future. We have been working with the Clear Tech Educational Programs in our different school districts. We also have a very strong partnership with Seminole College. I'm enjoying the heck out of Dr. C V A. She is really wanting to understand the community, and so I'm just too just punched to have her serve on the board and to have her actively, incredibly strong partner. Um, additionally, we've been um we frankly are a little bit concerned about the proposal that's been coming out from Wa- Western STEM and Western Washington University. They um, Western STEM did a survey in twenty nineteen that we didn't think was very reflective of our true economy and our true workforce needs. And it really seemed to show that our economy and our our workforce needs near that of Kiprep County, and I would argue that ours are very, very different from theirs. Uh, we are all in one workforce development council, but ours, there are twelve across the state. Ours is the only one of the twelve, but it's a subset of a county government, and it's a subset of Kiprep County government. There are um uh Bill Downing that runs it is a really terrific person, but the state process is that they look at the the needs of the town, the area as a whole, and Kiprep County represents eighty-eight percent of the workforce between the three counties. And so um, you know, it's, we just end up being um budgeted or uh workforceed, and so what our needs are are not fully represented. Western Washington has submitted a proposal to OFM for um tens of millions of dollars to expand their programs, and I've been meeting with them regularly, um and uh made Dr. Ames aware that they had this program and process and proposals happening. Um, and it just, you know, we don't need aerospace engineers up here. We the ACPI hires mechanical engineers. We don't have nuclear engineers, those kind of things, so it's an education process. It could be that it would be a great outcome, but um we moved to invoke the President of Olympic College and Seminole College, and we're making sure if there is an expansion of Western Washington program in our county, they have a physical presence. There are, our students are not expected to drive to Polo for classes, and that they're training for skill sets that are needed by our businesses here locally and not training for careers that only exist in Kiprep County. Moving on to housing, uh I I have been asked and served as the Vice Chair of the Clallum Housing Solutions Committee. I have a background in um real estate development, and so have some um good insights into that arena. Uh, we've been tracking the Housing Affordability Index. Clallum County has the worst housing affordability of any metropolitan county in proper state. And we also did a lot of research regarding the assessors, assessors day data, and um we'll be sharing that. So I recognize I am picking up too much time, so uh we've done, we've gotten a third grant. Uh, we created eighty new slots with sixty-eight childcare providers. We jumped to the next one. We have our weekly Coffee with Colleen conversation, um and we'll have a new website in two-four. And in the last twelve months, we've advised a hundred and twenty-one businesses uh for retention and expansion, thirty-four startups, twelve training events, and uh we were able to recruit baby crafts, of course, and now another new dealing uh AI farm is one that we're feel really strongly about. There's others that may be uh opportunities as well. So I just wanted to highlight some of our important target numbers. It's exciting we got to add the Department of Defense, and um of course, the city of Port Angeles really appreciates your partnership, and we are so very pleased to have Nathan West serve as a new Clallum County EDC member. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Colleen. Uh, before you go, let's see um if there are questions from council. Any questions for Colleen? That was a very helpful overview and clear that you have been very busy, so um thank you.
And we, we will continue to. We really wanna move the needle on improving our economy, and so with uh Rebecca on board, I know we're, I feel like we're really gonna make some great strides now.
Excellent. I might go ahead.
Yeah, you mentioned the local match that you needed for the P-TAC issue. How are you gonna get that?
So um, one of the things uh I've been talking to all of the different um So um one of the things uh I've been talking to all of the different um funding partners and of course, City of Port Angeles is one. I know we've taught, we've been at twenty thousand dollars. And um you know, if you have room in your budget, we would love to bump that up to thirty. We're asking Jefferson County as well to provide some funding and the City of Slim. Um we are dipping into our reserves as well, but um in the future, it could be that uh the state funds it. Uh the Department of Commerce has made an act to fund the state Washington P-TAC program, the match portion. We are the only ones of all the different pin um offices that are in an economically distressed area. All the others are not. So it might be that we get some um matching funds from the state.
Definitely would love to see matching friends from the state anytime you can bring them in. But I also want to just say publicly, I support that uh the City of Port Angeles helping to be a better funding partner because from my perspective, the return on investment is just, it's there. So anything we can do to help, I hope we do.
Well, thank you very much, Council of Friends. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? All right. Well, you're certainly covering a a wide breadth of issues, all of which, of course, fall under the economic development umbrella. Um but I would second your um your statement about the the real, I think we're gonna see really some benefits to our community with the partnership that Dr. Ames sees, the way Dr. Ames sees uh Peninsula College being positioned in the community. And I'm really grateful that she connected with you right away um to make some headway in that regard. So um so thank you so much for coming tonight. It doesn't look like there are any other questions, but we all know where to find you. So um appreciate it. Welcome Rebecca to your new position. I once had a a position that was a title much like yours where everyone kind of looks at you like, so what exactly do you do? Get it down. You'll get a one sentence answer pretty quickly and uh and you'll have some abbreviations on your business cards at some point. Anyway, congratulations um on your new position and and we look forward to hearing from both of you again soon. And um thanks again for all you do for us. All right. Have a good night. All right. So let's go back to the top of, well, not the top of the agenda. Um oh no, we need to go to the public hearing. We'll get back to item D next. So we have a public hearing. That's item F one on the agenda. And that is a public hearing regarding uh the utility rates for water, wastewater and medic one. And I am going to uh go to Serena for that one. Go ahead, Serena.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Um we do have a presentation prepared for you regarding the utility rates proposed for water, wastewater and medic one uh for this upcoming COSA cycle. So if you just give me one moment and I can share my screen.
While you are getting that, um I just wanted to note that I forgot to mention it this morning um to anyone on staff. But uh I believe we need to add the um conduct the first, open the public reading, conduct the first, open the public hearing and conduct the first reading since it is an ordinance. So I just made myself a note of that and take the ordinance. So I'll do that um before we move on. So all right, that's all. Thanks, Serena.
Thank you. All right. Um so we we do have this presentation prepared. There is a lot of content in there, so we'll do our best to uh be brief. Um but we want to make sure that we cover all of the content and um make sure everyone has a thorough thorough understanding of of the rate structure and um what the proposed rates are. So we're gonna go through our utility rate change review as well as what the methodology for our cost of service analysis is. And then we're gonna go through the rates for medic one, first water and then wastewater um as they're proposed. Okay, so starting out with just a little bit of housekeeping, we wanted to bring up the calendar of the expected cost of service analysis studies by utility. And so we had the water and wastewater rates, which are two year rates for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. Um medic one rates are for three years spanning twenty twenty three through twenty twenty five. And then we'll be reexamining the stormwater, electric and solid waste um both collections and transfer station rates for the years twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five. And that will occur about the same time um next fall. Okay. Uh the setting of utility rates each year is one of the most important things that we do each year as a city. Um because it does determine the appropriate revenue needed to offset planned expenses that are within the city's budget. Additionally, we do want to ensure that we're taking into consideration our community's ability to afford the rates that are in place and the services, and also that we are balancing our infrastructure and utility needs as well. And so to help with this, in two thousand and nineteen, when the city reviewed and updated their cost of service methodologies for the utility rate setting, there were a few key principles that were determined to be best practices when building these models. And so just to start off, it's important that we meet our revenue requirements and that we provide revenue stability to the utility as well as to our customers. Um our rates should be easy to understand and administer. They should be fair, equitable and affordable, and they should be competitive. And I just want to take a moment to pause on that competitive um piece just because I do know that we do frequently receive questions on why this is part of the principles in setting rates. And so competitive in this instance um is making sure we're providing appropriate service options for our community. And so are we considering things like keeping up with the needs of the utility? Or are there better or more efficient options available that we should be considering? And then finally, our COSA principles state that we should conform to generally accepted rate setting techniques, which are included in our methodologies, that we should encourage economic development and conservation, and that they should always be cost based. And so that's all been built into our methodologies and what you'll see going forward. And so before we dive into the twenty twenty three rates, I did want to just take a look back at what rate adjustments were approved in twenty twenty in these same utilities. Um in the water utility overall, we saw about a three point eight percent increase in two thousand and twenty with residential rates seeing about a five point four percent increase. And during that COSA setting process, we did utilize AMI settlement funds as rate relief. Um in the water or excuse me, in the wastewater utility, we saw about a four percent increase to the overall wastewater rate in two thousand and twenty with no change to the rate for the CSO. And for medic one, we saw a substantial change in twenty twenty of about a five point one percent increase for the residential rate and about a thirty six to thirty nine percent increase for the assisted living and nursing facilities. And this was largely due to the five year phase out of the subsidy that that was occurring on those assisted living and nursing facilities. And so as we look forward and you start to see the twenty twenty three rates, that phase out is included in those last years. Um and this will be the last COSA cycle that you'll see that phase out. It's also important to note that um just looking historically at our our COSA and our rate impacts, that um both the staff and council were tired to ensure that rates remain low for our community and residents um and businesses. Um in other funds, utility rates were held constant with no changes in the solid waste fund for all customers. And so we we just held those um steady. In the stormwater funds, uh the residential customers also saw largely no, no change. I think there was a couple cent decrease on that one. And in the electric fund, the city shifted costs from consumption to base as part of the phase out of shifting costs in the COSA model. And so that change was really um cost neutral for the majority of our customers. And so these actions do demonstrate the city's commitment to keeping the rates as low as possible while still providing exemplary services to our community. So taking a look at the methodologies and factors that went into the COSA for the twenty twenty three rate cycles, all of the methodologies that were approved by the Utility Advisory Committee and City Council in two thousand and nineteen have been used to calculate the utility rate adjustments. Funding for any capital needs have been set for the capital, or have been set from the Capital Facilities Plan. There have not been any changes that, um and so they were all built into the budget as they were um outlined in the CFP. And then uh the COSA does maintain the required fund balances per city policy. And as we've done for the last few years, we have averaged the rates over the two or three year cycle just to provide some stability for our customers um so that they don't see an adjustment each year, which kind of keeps that steady for them. And then in each utility, uh we do have a scenario or we have multiple scenarios in each utility and we prepared a chart that demonstrates um any estimated changes to customer bills, including high, medium and low users, just as an example um to kind of get an estimated made an effect of the rate changes that we'll be proposing. And so the cost of service analysis is based on the twenty twenty three planned budget. The city staff is uh currently working on finalizing the budget um and we do expect that that will come out later this week on Friday. Um however, we do take the data within that budget and build our cost of service analysis upon that. Um as a reminder, the city budgets are given a stringent review and every attempt to keep budgetary costs as low as possible is considered during the process. Um and that's just in consideration of rates or additional costs to our community. However, uh just currently within our budget, the city is seeing significant increases expected in twenty twenty three, primarily in the areas of personnel costs that resulted from collective bargaining agreements and costs for supplies and services that have occurred largely due to inflation. And then finally, in each utility, um as I did mention, we have prepared multiple scenarios for consideration because um as we look to maintain our infrastructure, additional capacity is going to become very critical for us to ensure that costs are not inflated um because of deferred projects or that we are not deflecting costs into future generations. And so balancing the affordability of our community with the needs um in the COSA is an essential part of this process. And so of the three um cost of service analysis that we do have to share with you tonight, we're gonna start off with the medic one utility. And I know there's gonna be a lot of content as we move forward for each one of the utilities. It is a little bit difficult for me to see if there are hands raised when I'm sharing my screens. And so I would just request that we wait until after the public hearing um for those questions. If you could just take note of slides, numbers, um and your questions, that would be great. And so um as we look at rates, as I mentioned, um the rates are linked to what we have planned in our twenty twenty three budget, what's planned and projected. And so it's really important to understand what those budgetary changes are that are occurring in the twenty twenty three year because they do drive any adjustments that occur within our COSA. And so in the medic one utility, we're seeing an overall budget increase as compared to the two thousand and twenty budget, which was in the the last COSA cycle for for medic one of about twenty one point four percent. And so that total dollar amount of that increase is six hundred and thirty five thousand four hundred dollars. And then just kind of drilling down on that a little bit, if we look at personal costs, those have increased twenty five point four percent. Uh costs for supplies increased about forty two percent. And then I just want to clarify uh what those supplies are. Those are safety equipment like PPE and pharmaceutical costs. Um additionally, in twenty twenty, when we were building the cost of service analysis, the medic one utility did not have any budget for capital projects. And since that time, the city has began to include those costs, both in the CFP and in the budget to help with the long term capital needs as the utility moves forward, so they can have a little bit more sustainability. Um but that also did um result in an increase to the budget for medic one utility. And so within medic one, there are a few other items that we should consider um when we're looking at the COSA. So again, as I mentioned in the um previous slides, the five year phase out has been carried into this COSA cycle. Um and that was approved during the last COSA cycle in twenty twenty. And um these are the last years of that phase out. Also, I do want to note that uh because of some unusual call volumes that occurred during the COVID nineteen pandemic, the cost of service analysis was calculated using the same volumes that were entered into the model in twenty nineteen. And so uh we did see quite a few anomalies that occurred in the last couple of years that did create an issue with distributing the cost of the needs within the model. And so we felt that to be fair for all users, we would use the same call volumes um from twenty nineteen. Additionally, the general fund subsidy was maintained in the cost of service analysis of two hundred and sixty five thousand five hundred dollars. That's the same as the transfer that's in the twenty twenty two budget. This was kept the same. And I do want to mention that in addition to those, that transfer, charges that typically would come from the general fund to the medic one fund or services um are not included as well. And so just to kind of clarify, these are allocations from the general fund for work that's performed by other departments. Um so as an example, I will pick on my own department. The Finance Department provides a number of services that are really for all cities um funds, but we charge our time back to other funds based on the services provided. So as an example, specific to medic one, we track and allocate the time it takes for calculating and billing of services, like the medic one fees. And so um in this COSA model, we have not um charged the the general fund or general fund has not charged medic one for these services. And that's been occurring for a number of years because the general fund has been subsidizing this utility. And so didn't make a lot of sense to charge a utility and then subsidize it. Um so uh we estimate that about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is being absorbed by the general fund for those charges that are not occurring. And so in total, the general fund is subsidizing the medic one utility at a rate of about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars each year. And that's been included in all three years of this COSA cycle. Okay, and then looking at um the overall rate changes, the first slide demonstrates what the medic one rates look like as they're entered into the COSA model with the factors that I previously just outlined in those those slides. This takes the twenty twenty three budget and directly applies it to the the COSA model. So um I do also want to note that on this slide, these are yearly costs. Um we, that's the way we have them in our ordinance. So these are yearly costs for our medic one rates. Um and looking at our residential yearly increase, that's estimated at about a forty five dollar and thirty eight cent increase or forty point seven percent, and that's during the cycle. Um that's an average rate. And so we took twenty three, twenty four and twenty five and averaged them together to get to that rate. And then some of the largest areas for an increase include the twenty four hour nursing homes, the assisted living facilities and city and public areas, including municipalities. And those are seeing anywhere from a sixty nine to seventy eight percent increase. And then just, I just want to go back quickly to those assisted living and twenty four hour nursing um lines because you'll see quite a big increase um each year for those. And I I just want to clarify the amounts that are listed here. So the total cost increases that we've included on the side are totals for what each customer would pay each year. Um and we've just kind of totaled each one of those. So we do actually calculate individual rates for each customer. Um but what we've included here is is an average. So we have an average increase of twenty three thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars. Um and that's that's different and based on a med- Medicaid factor that's built into our cost of service methodology dating back to twenty nineteen again. Okay. Um and then the last thing I wanted to mention is that one of the reasons why you're seeing the high increase again is just going back to uh the phase out of um the distribution of those costs where residential and commercial customers were subsidizing some of those assisted living and twenty four hour nursing groups. And so that's one of the reasons why you're seeing a higher increase there. And so uh we do have another option that's provided just in acknowledgement that the last slide included quite a large increase for some users. Uh we did want to provide a recommendation to include um a medic one utility rate increase with a rate stabilization option. And so that's what you're seeing on this slide. Uh staff has been able to identify about three hundred thousand dollars in funding that occurred from savings at the end of two thousand and twenty one. And we are recommending that the savings be built into the model for each year. So we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars for each year, starting in twenty twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. Um and that just will bring down our rates a little bit to provide some relief for our customers. And so with that change, um with this recommendation, um it brings the residential rate to a totally yearly difference of thirty six dollars and ninety seven cents or about thirty three point two percent. Um and with then municipalities and public areas, we'd be paying about fifty nine point eight percent increase and assisted living and twenty four hour nursing homes, about a seventy two percent increase. And again, that's that's kind of a total amount of an increase for each one of those customers. Okay, so we're just gonna go ahead and move right into the water utility COSA. And as we saw in the medic one utility, we have some uh budgetary changes in the water utility as well when comparing the twenty twenty to twenty twenty three um budget with an overall increase expected in this fund of about ten point three percent. And that's again what has been built into our COSA and that total increase is about seven hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars. And then uh just looking at this again, similar to medic one, we saw personnel increase costs of about five point seven percent. Supplies um at about a thirty one point two percent increase and capital transfers increased thirty four point seven percent. And I'm just gonna pause there just for a minute on capital transfers um because this is based on what has been entered and approved in the Capital Facilities Plan. That's what sets this transfer each year. Um so that's taken straight from the CFP. Um in all three of these utilities, that has not changed. So whatever you see in the CFP has been translated completely into the budget. And then finally, um looking at departmental charges or allocations. Um again, as I mentioned, those are uh charges primarily from the general fund for services that are provided. Um so in this instance, it could be for preparing the budget or processing invoices and payroll that we charge directly to those utilities. And then um also, I I do want to And then also, I do want to mention something that, I apologize, it's not on this slide, but I just, as we look forward at the COSA, it's worth mentioning that as we look at the increases that have been built into the water COSA from the budget, we've also looked for a bit of relief and stabilization as we've gone through the budget. And so one of the options that we do have available to us starting in November of 2023 is to pay off our 2013 water and wastewater revenue bonds early. And so I do want to just clarify that we have built that into the city's budget. We've also built it into the cost of service analysis that you'll see. We have three scenarios on this particular fund, and you'll see that in each one of those scenarios. And so the savings associated with that early payoff will occur in 2024. We would still be required to make the payment in 2023. And then we would also be issuing the payoff as well on that bond in 2023, so we don't start to see those savings until about 2024. And so in doing so and eliminating that debt payment for 2024, we were able to control some of those rate increases that might have been within our COSA by having that savings in the budget. And then starting in 2024, that savings amount is estimated at $184,000. Okay, so we're going to get started looking at the first option. As I mentioned, we do have three options this evening. These options are also all included in your council packet. And so the first option that we're viewing is based on the COSA with no increased capacity. So this is straight as it would be in the budget without any changes. And you may recall that I mentioned earlier in the presentation that we're considering ways that we can increase our efficiencies, move capital projects forward, and maintain city infrastructure through increased capacity. And so we have a critical need in the water utility and the wastewater utility. And we wanted to provide a few options for review and for consideration. So looking at this option, our residential and commercial rates, we have about a 7% increase to the base with a 26% increase to our usage rate. And our commercial rate, we would have anywhere from a 5.7% to a 9.2% increase. And then again, a 26% increase for usage. Municipal rates would be expected to go up anywhere from 6% to 9%. Federal non-taxable, again, anywhere from 6% to 9.5%. And irrigation rates expected to go up about 5.7% to 6% in this scenario. And then as promised, we have a slide that demonstrates what that would look like for each one of our customers. And so we have included the low, medium, and high consumption users. And we have a few options for low consumption users at 250, 500, and 750 cubic feet. And then our options for medium and high consumption users. And so I want to note that in these scenarios, the majority of our customers are going to fall anywhere from 500 to 1150 cubic feet of usage. So just looking at a low consumption user, they'd see an average change of about $4 as compared to the 2020 to 2022 rates, so those two-year rates there. And then for that low consumption user, anywhere from 750 cubic feet to 252 cubic feet. Their monthly change, again, about $4 to $6.59. A median consumption user, it's expected an average change of about $8.87 a month. And the high consumption user would be about $53.34 a month. Okay, so moving into our second option for the water rates. This includes increased capacity to allow for moving capital projects forward, completing tasks within our utility for maintenance, and complying with any mandates or regulations that are new to us. And we've built in about $140,000 to increase capacity in this utility to assist with those needs. And so looking at this rate, that's about a 9.2% increase across the board for residential customers. You'll also see that usage rates go up to about 31.3%. And that's going to be across, across the classifications for most of the user categories. And then our commercial rate goes up anywhere from 8.3% to 11.6% on the base. Looking at the municipalities, again, you see an increase of about 8.5% to 11.6%. And then our federal non-taxable rate is comparable to the municipal rates of about 8.72% to an 11.9% increase. And irrigation is looking at about an 8.2% increase in this scenario. And so what this looks like for our water customers, again, starting with our low consumption users, at the lowest end, we would see an increase of about an average of $5.10 as compared to the 2020 rates. And at the higher end of the low consumption range, users would see about an $8.19 increase on their monthly bill. Medium consumption users would see about $10.90 per month. And high consumption users would see about $63.92 increase. And so finally, we have one more alternative within the water utility to present, and this is the staff recommended rate. In recognition that some of these cost increases thus far have been pretty large and could greatly affect our customers, we have made a recommendation to include an increase per capacity as well as a rate stabilization funding to keep the rates from significantly increasing in the coming years. And so we're just recognizing where we are with our current economic trends and with inflation. And so this option includes $200,000 in rate stabilization. That's coming from National Park Service settlement funds that the city received in 2006 and 2008. And these funds that we received are specifically designed to be used for rate stabilization or for capital projects. And so staff is recommending that we use these at this time for this COSA cycle. And when we utilize the rate stabilization, we see about a 6.1% increase as compared to the 2020 rate and about a 27.6% increase for the usage rates. And you'll see that 26% or 27.6% in just about every category. And then commercial customers would see anywhere from a 5.2% to an 8.5% increase. Municipal customers would see a 5.5% to an 8.5% increase with federal non-taxable customers seeing about a 5.3% to an 8.3% increase. And then finally, irrigation customers would see about a 5.2% increase in this scenario. And then just looking at what that means for our customers, our lowest consumption users would see about a $3.72 increase each month as compared to 2020. And then on the higher end of that consumption, within our low category, we would see about a $6.44 increase. Medium consumption users would see about an 8.84% increase with high consumption users seeing about $55.54 per month in this scenario. And again, this is the option that staff is recommending because we feel that it provides the best balance between affordability and the needs within this utility. Okay, and then finally, we have one last COSA to present this evening, and that's for the wastewater utility. As in the other two utilities, we just want to take a quick look at what we're seeing for our budgetary changes as compared to 2020. So in this fund, we have an overall increase of about 5.2% or $375,500. Our personnel costs increased 17.3%. Supply is about 22.4%. Departmental charges for services, about 7.3%. And then finally, those capital transfers increased 21.8%. And again, that's entirely based on what was entered in the capital facilities plan for infrastructure needs. Okay, and then additionally, as mentioned in the water funds, the 2013 water and wastewater revenue bonds are also being projected to pay off early in 2023. So those are combined bonds for water and wastewater, so they do impact the wastewater fund as well. This has also been factored into the rates. We have two scenarios, and you'll see it in both of those in the next few slides. And so for 2024, the amount of savings that would be realized from paying off that debt early within the wastewater fund is estimated to be about $75,200. Okay, so our first scenario includes the COSA as it stands in our current budget. And then again, the second option will include an increased capacity for the utility of about $140,000, the same as what we saw in our water department. And again, that's for infrastructure and maintenance needs. And so looking at the first option, without an increase to capacity, we're seeing an increase of about 2.8% for residential billing. The surcharge for the CSO will not change, so that would remain the same. And that will bring our total increase, if you include the surcharge and the wastewater base, to about a 2% increase with no change to base for our commercial customers and about a 12.2% increase to the usage rate. Municipal customers would see a slight, very slight, 1% reduction to the base rate and an 8.5% increase to the usage rate. Federal non-taxable customers would see about a 47.5% reduction in base fees and 11% increase to the usage. And so this is what it looks like for our low consumption users at about a $2.21 increase, and that's on our lowest end. And about a $4.78 increase per month on the high end of that low consumption users. Our median consumption users would see $6.84 increase. And our high consumption users would see $39.48 increase as compared to 2020. Okay, so the second scenario within the wastewater fund includes the increased capacity that I mentioned on the previous slide. This is also the staff recommendation for the wastewater rates. Okay, so this changes the rate a little bit and does increase the overall base for residential customers to about 5% with the usage going up to about 15.7% increase. Our commercial rates would go up to about 6% increase with the usage also going up to 15.7%. And then again, in this scenario, the CSO surcharge would remain the same with no changes expected in this COSA cycle, and that's for the two years, 23 and 24. Our municipal rates would go up to about 5.7% with usage going up about 15%. And our federal non-taxable rates would go up 7.7% with usage going up about 16.9%. And so just looking at this second scenario, what's it would look like for the bottom line for our residential customers, low consumption? Users would see anywhere from $3.28 to a $6.60 increase per month. Medium consumption users would see about a $9.25 or a 9 cent increase. And high consumption users would see a $51.42 increase each month. And then just again, that is the staff's recommendation, this scenario, in order to balance our affordability with the needs of the utility again. And so this, this last slide takes the staff recommendation for each one of those utilities and totals it up by low, medium, and high consumption users. This was a recommendation from the UAC to include this so that you could see the total amount of change that's estimated. And so for Medic One, we have taken that and extrapolated it to monthly so that it wasn't too confusing. And so what we're looking at on our low consumption users is about anywhere from a $10.8 increase to a $16.12 increase, total monthly costs for water, wastewater, and Medic One combined. And then for our medium consumption users, that's about a $21.17 increase. And for high consumption users, that's $110.4 combined. And then off to the side there, we've included the total customer count that's within those calculations for low, medium, and high. Okay, and so just to wrap up and close, it's really important to know that staff is, is very committed to ensuring that utility rates remain affordable to our community. It is our top priority when we build our cost of service analysis and when we're reviewing our budget. And it's particularly important as we're going into the coming year, looking at the high levels and the inflation that we're seeing and economic trends that are indicating there could be some affordability concerns and considerations coming in the next year. And so we want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration as well. And also that as we're projecting our utility rate increases, we are trying to balance the needs with the utility to provide quality services. And so as a result, we have not included anything in our COSAs that are not essential needs to our utilities. We have also offered a rate stabilization funding to assist residents within, with the affordability of those rate increases because we really do need to ensure that our utilities remain solvent, sustainable, and that we're considering addressing the needs of those utilities as we look into our future years. And so at their September 13th meeting, the utility advisory committee did send a favorable recommendation for the staff recommended 2023 to 2024 water and wastewater rates and the 2023 to 2025 Medic One rates to the council. And so tonight, council staff is requesting that you read the ordinances adjusting the utility rates in the water, wastewater, and Medic One utilities, open the public hearing on the proposed rates, and then continue the public hearing to the October 18th council meeting. And then, Madam Mayor, I will go ahead and stop sharing the screen just for the public hearing. And then I'm, I'm happy to bring it back up if there are specific questions about slides.
Thank you. I need to look through really quickly because I, you said ordinances, and I think I only tagged one. Here we go. Okay. Want to make sure I have them both. So I'm going to read the ordinances and then open the public hearing. We'll hear from the public and then go to discussion from council. And we will continue the public hearing to the next meeting. So I will do a first reading of the ordinances. We have an ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending sections of Chapter 13.44 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to water rates. And, oh, let's see, there must be another one. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending sections of Chapter 13.65 relating to wastewater service rates. And my apologies, hold on one moment. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending Chapters 13.73 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to ambulance service and Medic One rates. And with that, I will open the public hearing. So just a couple of notes on the public hearing. First of all, if you are in attendance and wish to speak, you can simply click the raise your hand feature. We will see that you have your hand raised and call on you. You'll be able to tell when you are unmuted. And if you can start by stating your name and whether or not you are a city resident for the record, that would be great. There, there is no time limit that we ask you to keep your comments succinct. When possible, if you are a call-in user and you want to speak, you dial star three and it will raise your hand. And let's see, I feel like I'm forgetting something. Oh, there, this isn't necessarily an opportunity for questions. It is an opportunity to tell us what you think. And often, council members, if there are questions in public comment, can ask those of staff. But this is also our first reading. We will take this issue up again at our next meeting for everyone's information. I do already have one hand raised, which I assume is for the public comment, I mean, the public hearing. So I will open it, and that is Sue Aspeland. So when you are unmuted, you can, again, state your name and whether or not you're a city resident, and then give us your comment. We'll give IT just a minute. All right, Sue, can you hear me? We should be able to hear you now.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can, so go ahead with your comment, please.
All right. My name is Sue Aspeland, and I reside within the city limits of Port Angeles. Members of city council, thanks so much for this opportunity to make a comment this evening on the proposed adjustments to the 2023 utility rates. I purchased my home in PA in June and moved in the 1st of August, so I've only recently received a utility bill. To say that I was astounded when trying to understand my bill is an understatement. I learned that my wastewater charges were based on not only my house water, which makes perfect sense to me, but also on the consumption of my irrigation water, which I don't believe will ever pass into the wastewater system of the city. While I don't see this specifically addressed anywhere in the municipal code, I assume that this charge must somehow be an oversight given that in the briefing document from the city manager and the finance director, the principles and methodology for rate setting must be just, reasonable, fair, and equitable, and that they determine true and fair costs. Charging me and others similarly situated for water that doesn't utilize the city's wastewater infrastructure can't be considered just, reasonable, fair, and equitable. I have absolutely no problem paying for the irrigation water that I use on my property to raise food, support pollinators, maintain plants that help protect the environment, and beautify, not beautify our community. But it sure doesn't seem appropriate that in addition to paying for that water, having to pay an additional wastewater cost seems unjust, unreasonable, unfair, and inequitable. If my irrigation water does indeed impact the city's wastewater system somehow, I'd really love to learn how. As you consider the utility charges for the future, please consider removing the irrigation water usage component from the wastewater charges. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening. component from the wastewater charges. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you so much, Sue, for taking the time to come and speak to us. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Nina, I see your hand is up, and I just want to make sure we can unmute you. Your hand is still up, so I don't know if you wanted to speak during this time, but I don't want to skip you in case you do. So we can unmute you in case you wish to speak during the public hearing.
Sorry, that's a mistake with computer unsavvy people.
No problem at all. I just wanted to make sure you weren't wishing to speak, and I didn't want to skip over you in case you were.
Yep. I will try to take it down if I can figure it out.
No problem. All right. Thank you.
You're muted, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. So we will continue the public hearing to our next meeting, and I will open it up to council. Yes, go ahead. Oh, right. Voicemail for a public hearing. Sorry. Let's do the voicemail now, and then we'll go to council.
Let me get that set up real quick.
I'm Judith Taylor. I live at five nineteen South Washington Street in PA. And I happen to be the admin of a next-door group called landscaping for water conservation, pollinators, and maintenance. I submitted written comments, which I hope you'll read because they include several more suggestions, but I want to make two key points. Those of us who invest a lot of money and water and time and work into landscaping around our homes and gardens, whether they be dollars and drugs or food, pay for the water for those plants as it comes out of the faucets and as it goes into the ground or into the containers. The city bills us for that, calling it wastewater. I'm not wasting water. I'm recycling it and contributing to the community in stewardification and food health efficiency, period. I share blueberries, strawberries, tomatoes with several neighbors every summer, and that builds a sense of community and connectedness. And we absolutely need more of that in this city and in this world. So instead, we warn and encourage people to quit worrying about lawns and instead plant more native plants and drought-tolerant plants in sections of their yards. Nobody, not many people here, water their yards anyway, so why are we being penalized? Second, the trees don't continue charging people fees for planting trees. Climate change people, we lost our tree city status on my street. All but one house and mine and one other that people have cut down all their trees. So require permit for cutting down trees, not for planting trees, that the homeowner has to pay for anyway.
And that's where the message ended.
Thank you, Carrie. We do have a number of emails in our email inboxes. If you haven't seen them yet, some of them came in in the last twenty-four hours, and I know not everyone has the capacity to check their email every day. So do check those for additional public comment. All right, I have I had Mike's hand up. I see Brendan's hand up, so we'll go to Brendan and then Mike. Unless Mike's looking at me funny, but anyway, we'll go to Brendan.
Yeah, thank you so much for like putting this all together and breaking it down and presenting it to us in a adjustable way. You know, we're coming out of the pandemic now. Gas has doubled in the last two years. Rents are up like thirty percent. My grocery bill for three people has doubled. It's just I can't I can't accept rate increases now. And I understand that this budgetary shortfalls that will happen if we don't, so I'm gonna make a motion. No motion? Can't make a motion?
I don't think I don't think yet because we we have a second we have a second public hearing on this, so unless your motion includes waiving the second reading, which would be not probably the best option because of the opportunity for public hearing, but certainly would love to hear what you have to say.
I will add that into my motion.
Saying I think he can make a motion. If the motion is to not hold a second hearing and table the issue, that is an option. I'm not going to second that, but that's an option.
Okay, so I I move I move to instruct staff to apply a mix of ARPA funds and reserves to address the budgetary shortfalls in utilities and delay the utility rates in water, wastewater from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four and Medic One from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. Increases the rate increases due directly to the COVID-nineteen virus and the subsequent half-century high inflation that we are facing. And waive the second public reading.
And I don't hear a second.
Okay.
So motion dies, but thank you for your thoughtful, creative, problem-solving.
You gotta try. The ARPA money's gotta be used.
Thank you. Are you? Do you have more? I don't want to cut you off. You just muted yourself. Okay. Other council want to speak to the issue? Or have questions? Oh, Navara, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I didn't accidentally jump over Mike. Didn't Mike have his hand up? Am I lying?
He did at one point, but I'm
I don't mind.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. We'll go to you next.
Okay. I just didn't want to like accidentally forget about Mike. I have a couple of questions, and then I have some thoughts. Right, so Serena, I apologize. I did not take down page numbers, but I think my questions will likely be apparent to what they're talking about. I wanted to ask about Medic One. I was looking at, on the slides, it had the different like ratepayer sections. And one of them was, you know, businesses or, you know, what a corporate customer, whatever their that section is called. And then the next one was apartments and the housing authority. And I noticed that the so I was wondering, are the people in those like customers who are living, residents who are living in those units or like the housing authority or like the apartment manager in general? I'm thinking about the fact that those would be likely are probably some of our lowest-income residents. So anyhow, I just wanted clarification on that. You'd think after all of these years, I probably would have asked this by now, but and then the other question I wanted to ask is around water. So since we have some public comment around, you know, outdoor irrigation, I'm wondering if the irrigation customers is like when I water my garden outside, does that is, am I an irrigation customer or is that like farms or other entities? I just want to make sure that that since we received public comment, sometimes, you know, we use like special language for things. I just don't want to get my wires crossed about that. And then the last thing I'm hoping you can speak to is I'm pretty sure that the city has an application for like low-income residents. And I was wondering if you could just remind us what that is. And then I'll lastly just say that I'm generally in favor of the options that staff put forward with the rate stabilizations. And I am really glad to see the different options that you provided and the different outcomes that we could have. Thank you. Let me know if my questions weren't clear either.
I will. We'll do my best to try and remember all the pieces to the questions. So if I do miss anything, please just let me know. So regarding Medic One, if we're looking at apartments and housing authorities, those generally are are just generically the housing authority, and they may pass that down. I know that there are some apartment complexes that do do that. But we don't, if they have services with us specifically by apartment, then they would be charged that way. But otherwise, sometimes it's built into the rent, so that's that's handled differently. But when we're talking about it, it's more holistic. Going back to your water question. So we do have like, it's kind of a two-part question. We have an individual irrigation meter that that's separate from, I'll call it your house meter, so your standard water meter. And so we do have some customers that are on that. That irrigation meter does not run through wastewater, so we don't count that in what's calculated in our wastewater rates. But if you're using your standard meter for watering your garden or your lawn, that does run through. And we are using that to calculate your wastewater rates. And then finally, just going back to the discount application. Sorry, I had to think on the question for a moment. That is available on the city's website and a number of locations on the finance page under utilities is one one location to get it. And it is something that we offer. It's based on income levels. And so many customers are eligible for a twenty-five percent or a thirty-five percent discount that's applied to all utilities except for Medic One right now. And so you just submit that application to us, we review it, and then we can have that separate rate applied for a twenty-five or thirty-five percent discount.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I think, you know, if if at the next meeting or in the future we do pass these along, I think, you know, I I think it is important to remind people, Ray, I know that we can access the application on the website, but I always think it's a good opportunity to remind folks that, you know, many people in our community likely qualify for those discounts and that the folks who are concerned about us passing down these rates to the folks who really can't afford those increases have some options with the city that they would qualify for to help bring those costs down and probably reduce the bills that they're already paying. So I just wanted to to talk about that very briefly, so I really appreciate you reminding us what those are. Thank you.
Can I ask a point of clarification? What's the process for a typical residential customer to get the irrigation water? And how much does it change their monthly utility bill?
So I can start some of that question, and then I believe our interim Director Healy probably has some comments on that as well. So there is, I believe that they submit a service request with the city to obtain that meter. And then we add that onto their bill based on the rate that's in our ordinance. I would pass that on to Director Healy, though, to to give you the details on that.
You're muted, Mike. You're not. You're just not. I mean, try. I'm muting one more time. Nope. Is that Director Hunter's old computer?
It is the computer in office that's caused problems before, so we'll get Director Healy connected via phone.
Okay. So chat, check, check your chat, Director Healy. IT can send you the instructions. It's pretty straightforward, but if you haven't done it before. So we'll come back to your answer before we move on. I will make a note to not leave that leave from there. So let's go on to Mike's questions.
So I think that Serena might have gone over this, and I might not have quite caught it, but with the irrigation meter, is that adding to the wastewater charge?
If there's a separate irrigation meter, it does not add on to the wastewater charge.
Okay, because that's, I know, something we talked about quite a bit when we were talking about the methodologies for the COSAs. You know, it's been a little while now, but there isn't really a great way for us to independently calculate the wastewater usage, and so we're using the water usage as the proxy. And I remember having many, many long discussions about how that all works when we did the COSAs. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we could ground truth that. I did, I was somewhat attracted to the idea of the average water usage from a certain period of the year. I feel like that has some merit. At the same time, you know, it's a it's a tricky thing because I don't want to incentivize people to water their lawns. I know that that's a potentially controversial thing to say. But I do think that people that are talking about, you know, gardening, growing food, that's that is a real benefit to our community. So I definitely would encourage people to use those irrigation meters if it's applicable. The question that I also wanted to ask is, when does the CSO rate end?
That CSO rate is based on the debt that's associated with the CSO, and so it ends when the debt expires or matures. And so that's currently scheduled for twenty thirty-six. We do have some options for early maturity. And so we will be looking at that as those come up.
And then the what was the utility that you mentioned paying off the bond early for? Was that water or wastewater?
It's for both. So it's a they're combined water wastewater revenue bonds. So there's a larger percentage that will be paid off for water because that was based on the usage of that debt, but they affect both utilities.
Okay, thanks. And I would just say that overall, I support the options that were recommended by the staff and the Utility Advisory Committee. I know this is a tough pill to swallow, but we're, you know, climbing, we're coming down that mountain of debt. And at the same time, we're trying to make sure that we don't kick the can further down the road, that we take seriously our responsibility to maintain these utilities, to make sure that future generations aren't going to be put in the position that, you know, me and my generation are being put into right now, which is patching up all of the responsibilities that previous generations left to us through, in my mind, irresponsible management of these utilities. And then, you know, continuing with our our financial policy of not accumulating new debt. And like the strategist in me really is not happy that that the time period that we're saying we're not going to accumulate new debt is one of the lowest interest rate time periods in American history. But that's the way it is. I think it's the right thing to do to care for this utility, for these utilities, and I will support these rates.
Thank you, Mike. Any, let's see, hold on. Latricia, go ahead.
Yeah, not not to belabor the the subject, and I I wasn't, you know, not familiar with the long-term discussions that the Utility Advisory Committee has had on wastewater rates, how they're determined. But I am, I I believe if I'm correct, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, Serena or Nathan, the commercial wastewater rates have a formula that take into consideration things that people would do in the summertime, like watering their garden. Could be as simple as washing their car, things like that, that don't go into the wastewater system. They usually get soaked into the ground. I'm wondering why we can't take some similar formula that's used that I believe is used in developing the commercial wastewater rate and use that for developing a wastewater rate for residential use also. I mean, I I we have had a lot of comments concerned about that water being utilized as part of calculating your overall wastewater rates. So I mean, if there is a current formula that kind of offsets that, you know, estimated usage, please let us know in the wastewater rate. If not, I I think that it's something that the city should still consider for future rates. And the other question I had is, with the stabilization funds, why are we why was the amount suggested, I think, capped, I think, one was like a hundred thousand, another one was two hundred thousand? How much money it remains in those stabilization funds, and is it possible to increase the amount recommended for stabilization funds? Those are my two comments. But I I do agree, I mean, with what Mike said that, you know, we we can't put off investing in in the needs. We we do need to address capacity. We we can't create in our utilities a backlog of maintenance needs, which will impact future generations. We need to stay on top of that. So I I don't have a problem. I know it's going to be tough. You know, I'm even looking at, you know, the the increase of it, you know, an increase of what? Ten or fifteen dollars a month on my bill, so it's going to be impacting me too. But I also know and I see the city budget and and that there's the need for it. So so I do agree. Um, so, so I do agree, you know, with, with the overall wha- what's being presented here, but um, a- again, just looking to see how and if there is still wriggle, wriggle room in the future to reanalyze that wastewater um, charge. Thank you.
We can go back to um, Mike to answer the question about irrigation. Go ahead, Mike. You have to unmute with the computer if your phone is linked to the webex on your computer. Um, you leave your phone unmuted and you click mute and unmute with the computer. It should work. No. There's someone, must be someone in the building who can run over and help you while we're continuing our discussion. Um, worst-case scenario, uh, maybe someone else could um chime in or uh, someone else could um, come over and help you. Um, I know IT's not available onsite, but maybe someone else in the building could. So we'll try again. Um, we'll come back to you in just a minute, okay? Um, and we will go to Lindsay. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Thanks for getting me. Just as I'm playing on my computer too, it's one of those days. Um, I don't wanna steal Mike's thunder. Um, I'm sorry, Director Healy's thunder, but I think that if a typical residential customer were to say, hey, I'd like to add irrigation water so that I avoid that per-unit consumption cost for the water that I'm irrigating my garden, um uh, and, you know, I don't wanna pay for the water going to the sewer. They would then be facing, if they chose the five-eighths inch irrigation line, a thirty-seven dollars and forty cent cost every month added to their utility bill. So that just doesn't make sense unless you were using way too much water, watering a small lot in the city of Port Angeles. So the irrigation water thing is not a solution. Um, it is, is, I think, improper for us as a city to suggest that people can get out of that consumption cost by installing a second meter, which we're gonna charge almost forty dollars a month for. So I really think we should find a solution to this. Um, we've been sitting on it far too long. And the easy solution is what one of, um, the constituents who which is your November, December, January, and February water bills. And um, oh. Hello, Norm, you've changed. Um, they take your winter water bills and take that amount of water consumption and then figure that in for your consumption rate for your sewer. Um, as we know, with the water utility and the sewer utility, the big cost is the base rates. The, the cost of creating the conveyance system that gets the water to the utility customers. It's not the actual per-unit cost. So asking somebody to basically double their water base rate to get around the sewage consumption cost is, is not, um, not a solution here. So I would like to see us modify the uh, sewer costs so that uh, we're not charging people for the consumption cost that they don't use. Uh, that has never made sense, and I think people argue to it very well. I agree with Councilmember French that um, you know, there are beneficial uses to outdoor wastewater and non-beneficial uses. Not using the legal water law term there, but um, what is helping us as a community to be more sustainable and resilient. And um, you know, it makes way more sense for us to grow food here in Port Angeles than it does to import food from California, where of course they have plenty of water and there's no crisis there in terms of food consumption. So shortage on the
Lindsay, you're getting kind of choppy.
In, in the food that we're buying. It's, sorry, I, I, I will try to switch when I'm done. The other thing that I'd like to do is um yeah, I guess I'll back up. Um, the, the process is both math and policy. And, and the presentation often appears to be very math, but when we dig down into it, it is a lot of policy, you know, decisions we make, when we build models about assumptions. And, you know, how we categorize different users, how we try to distribute cost, what really goes into a base rate versus a consumption rate, um, and all of that, or those are policy decisions. I would really like when we do the COSA, to have it be mostly a math problem. And the policy then, it comes in outside that. So when we say we shouldn't subsidize between user groups, I think that is basically saying we shouldn't do policy in the math problem. We should do the math problem and do it right. And then we should make policy considerations about, about fairness outside of that. And, and I guess the big fairness question, which I appreciate Deputy Mayor Meyer um, throwing out as a bombshell at the beginning of this, is, is affordability. And as we know, um, utilities are expensive and it's a part of housing, which is also expensive. Many of our residents are utility burdened. Um, so I agree that we should address that. I disagree that we should address that by subsidizing the COSA. And I think instead we should use, like what Councilmember Carr suggested, the utility um, discounts for low-income customers. Um, I'd like a universal solution there instead of a means-tested solution, but I think that's where we're at, is having a means-tested solution. We already have that program. And um, people who don't need the subsidy, who aren't utility burdened, um, can pay, can pay full price for the utilities. Um, I don't think the general fund needs to be subsidizing. I don't think stabilization funds need to be subsidizing those utility customers. But for people who need the subsidy because they're utility burdened, those are the people who should actually focus and target our utility subsidies on. I mean, we're talking about using, I think, somewhere between half a million and a million dollars in subsidies, basically for everybody. Um, you know, rich and poor alike, which is great, you know, um, you know, Thanos equity, but is not necessarily what we wanna do. Uh, when we're saying, well, people are utility burdened. No, not everybody is utility burdened, so let's target the folks who are and have a better impact in our subsidies for people. So I, I would like to have the COSA do the math and then wrap policy around that where we say, we're gonna make sure that everybody who's utility burdened gets relief. Thanks.
Thank you, Lindsay. Charlie, do you wanna chime in?
No, I think everything's covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, I really appreciate the conversation. I think we had some good um, really useful public comment. I always appreciate a recommendation or, you know, suggestions and, um, I think that's really helpful. Um, the questions that I had written down to ask have all been answered, I think. Um, I think we have some food for thought. Um, and putting all of that aside, um if we, if all else being equal, I appreciate the um recommendations made by staff um, and suspect, or just, you know, e- expect, I should say, to um, support those. Um, and I think we do have some good questions that we might be able to answer a little bit more clearly before our next meeting. Um, particularly for um people who have asked those questions. So I appreciate um, staff having good answers, but let's, before um, we go back around in case anyone has more questions, um, let's go to Mike, who used his creative problem solving and just went to a different computer that's working. So um, Mike, do you wanna um, jump in?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, I will, I will start by sharing with you that in the thirty-eight-plus years in public works, it wouldn't be a, a rate study if this question didn't come up of, of water, of the equity of water being used to offset sewer costs. Um, especially, I have the unique experience of being the chairman of the American Public Works Association Water Resources Committee for two terms, so I get this question from all regions of the nation about ten times a month. And quite frankly, all the public, all the professional organizations have come to the realization that unless you wanna set an individual rate by lot size and permeable space and the like, you do one of two things. You have this rate as you do right now, which is probably ninety uh, percent or more of all communities running at utility districts. And you offer the irrigation rate, or irrigation meter, if you like, which then allows, it, it puts the irrigation water in the hands of the customer and gives them control of, of managing their bill by, by a little bit. Now, granted, that is a, that is a more um, expensive option, but it does reach equity. Uh, unless you're going to set a rate for each, each individual lot size. Were there other questions while I was running down the stairs?
I don't think so. Are there any questions um for Director Healy while he is on a computer that has audio uh, for us? Go ahead, Lindsay.
So thinking about it, what would happen if we said irrigation uh, base rates are zero if you also have another water rate as a residential customer and are watering uh, food or habitat garden?
Well, I think it's important to, to remember that in order to extinguish the lot, uh, the, what is irrigation and what is not, uh, requires an extra meter, an extra tap, which is anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars to, or more. You also may, that tap may be on the opposite side of the street and you may have uh, you may have street repairs to, to accomplish through that, that project as well. Putting the street back to its original condition or pre-construction condition. Yeah, I think it's also important to remember that no matter how, how you wanna skin this cap, there's X amount of dollars to run a water utility and a wastewater utility. Uh, we'll share with you that um, I have heard and they still get the complaints from the residents that I don't have grass or I don't grow flowers and, and um, or, or fruits and vegetables. Um, but where the water rate is at ninety-six or seven percent, uh, or I'm sorry, the wastewater rate is at ninety-six or seven percent of water consumption. But in doing that, all that does, it, it doesn't get you any closer to equity. It further um, increases pressure on wastewater to make uh, to make money or to generate the revenue that they need to operate. And again, you still come back to that lot size. Um, you know, if somebody is running a, a, almost a nursery, um, you know, that, that two or three percent break isn't going to uh, uh, cover all their water, so that you, you'll still get the arguments on both sides, councilman. And it, and it still creates, uh, for some that, that don't garden and don't um um, don't have grass or, uh, that have desert landscape. It creates a, a, they're actually subsidizing those with their gardens, so.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
That's a lot, and I, I appreciate that it was probably clear as mud, but it's a little history on it.
Yeah, thank you um, for sharing us the, the depth of background that you have. It's useful to have a, also to, I think it's always useful to hear what, what is happening around us because we don't necessarily, you know, we look at the affordability index, but we don't look at what other municipalities are doing necessarily, so I think that's helpful. Um, all right. Um, are there um, other questions from council before we move on? Um, oh, uh, let's see, Lindsay, you have your hand raised, so I'm gonna call on you in case that's a new hand. Go ahead, Lindsay.
I apologize, my city computer kaputted. Um, I totally missed Mike's comment, so I apologize. I guess I'll follow up. Um, I just want options when we get to the next uh, public hearing and the motions on this, and those options are um, figuring out how to resolve this irrigation water question. And also figuring out how we do a good affordability, um, you know, energy, utility burden. I guess in this case, you know, water utility burden, um, subsidy for the people who need it and not subsidizing the folks who don't.
Right, definitely follow up with Mike. He had some good input based on his um professional hat that he has worn in a variety of capacities um, around utilities. So um, all right, let's um, continue this to our next meeting. And um, we do have a lot more on the agenda, but I would really like to um, take a break, um, five-minute break, and then in order to make, I think, it more efficient, um, the, the next item on the agenda is, oh, it works out well. So we should go back to late items and consent agenda, but I'm going to propose that we move on to H1 because Emily Dexter is in the meeting and because I'm going to recuse myself from that item, I can just jump off right now at the break and someone can text me when it's time to come back. That feels more efficient than coming back and then doing that. So um, if that works for everyone, I will propose that. So I will jump off. We'll take a five-minute break and then Brendan will run um, that portion of the meeting, uh, Deputy Mayor Meyer, and I will come back when someone texts me and tell me that we're done. Um, so thank you, and we'll see you all. Yeah, I will see you in less, more than five minutes, but everyone else will be back in five.
Thanks. And Mayor Dexter, you're recusing yourself because Emily's your uh, sister-in-law, right? So we'll sort that out later, I think so.
All right. Is everybody back? Charlie, Navara, Mike, Nathan. There's Latricia. Is she back? Wait another second. Ah, wonderful. There she is. All right, guys, I'm taking over, taking the taking the wheel. If you guys are following along, we're moving to H1. This is the Port Angeles Food Bank. It has an ask for ARPA funds. I don't know if I should just read the summary. We had a presentation last council meeting by.
Deputy Mayor, be happy to do a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Nathan. Appreciate it. Please do that.
So Deputy Mayor and Council, this evening we're bringing back to council action that is follow through to your September 5th meeting, during which time we had Emily Dexter, the executive officer for the Port Angeles Food Bank, do a detailed presentation on substantial needs relative to food for the Port Angeles community. And we really appreciate her presentation. Council did direct staff to follow up and work with the food bank on finding potential funding opportunities to bring back to council. Staff, including myself and Director Karazozza, did meet with Ms. Dexter and we did discuss different funding options. Ultimately, we agreed that the best funding solution for this particular need was through the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And with that in mind, staff has drafted a an agreement under the American Rescue Plan Act, including a scope of work as well as a resolution for council consideration this evening to help fund the food bank in the amount of $220,000 for the purpose of assisting them with Port Angeles food needs that have been impacted and ultimately created through impacts from the COVID pandemic. I do know that Ms. Dexter is here this evening representing the food bank. Council, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have on this item. Staff is recommending that council pass the resolution and authorize the city manager to execute the ARPA agreement.
All right, thank you, Manager West. So I guess I'll read the resolution and then we'll open it up for questions or a motion. So a resolution of the City of Port, City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, approving the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for reimbursement to the city for pandemic-related expenses incurred in responding to COVID-19. Whereas, the Office of Financial Management, OFM, notified the city that it'll be receiving $5,646,840,000 from the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funding. And whereas, staff compiled eligible ARPA funding options and presented recommendations on the in a July 6, 2021 memorandum to council. And whereas, during the July 6, 2021, July 20, 2021, and the August 17, 2021, city council meetings, discussion was held on the utilization of ARPA funding. And whereas, during the September 7, 2021, and the October 19, 2021, city council meetings, council discussed in detail several other items included recommended by staff for funding. And whereas, during the October 4, 2022 meeting, city council agreed that the City, Port Angeles Food Bank qualified for ARPA funding and that they should be approved for funding in the amount of $220,000. And whereas, council agreed that other funding authorizations could be considered and approved at later meetings. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council, the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, that funding for the reimbursement to the city for, sorry, the Port Angeles Food Bank for pandemic-related expenses incurred in responding to COVID in the amount not to exceed 220,000, hereby is approved and authorized. And it should be further resolved that the city manager is authorized to negotiate such details, conditions, contract amendments, recipients, sorry, agreements and other terms as appropriate to carry out funding authorized above. Passed by the City, Council of the City of Port Angeles at a regular meeting, said council held on the fourth day of October 22, 2022. Thank you. So any questions or motions?
This is Tricia. I make a motion that we pass the resolution approving funding for the Port Angeles Food Bank in the amount of $220,000 and approve and authorize the city manager to sign the ARPA sub-recipient agreement and complete final negotiations with the Port Angeles Food Bank to make minor modifications to the agreement as necessary.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Latricia, seconded by Navara. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we go up.
Sorry, I would like to say something. I just wanted to say that I'm really glad we're doing this. I think that it's been really exciting to see the changes and sort of new iterations of the food bank over the last few years. I know that the food bank does some really incredible work in our community and supports residents in need, folks who are food insecure from all walks of life. And it's been really encouraging and I think really positive to see, you know, the new location and now the new changes to move towards a more, you know, store-based model. And so I think it's, I find it really encouraging that we're able to support this as a city and show our support and to, I think, provide some real necessary services through the food bank to the residents in our community who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you, Navara. Yeah, I just want to quickly add that I'm happy that we we all as council decide to pump the brakes on the ARPA spending right out of the gate and that we have been able to help so many people like the food bank and with with the funds in such a crazy time that we're living through like a one in a hundred year pandemic. So thank you for all the work that you do, Ms. Dexter. I do appreciate it and the Port Angeles Food Bank. So if there's any other questions, speak now, forever hold your peace. All right, awesome. Up, Latricia, go ahead.
I just have a clarification. Lindsay's only on via his cell phone. Is that correct?
Can somebody confirm that?
I see him in the attendees. But I don't see him online.
Could we get him moved, I guess, into the panelists?
I don't know. I wonder if he's having phone or computer problems again.
Yeah, I don't I don't know if maybe, I don't know, IT can pull him in and see if he responds or does somebody text him?
So Deputy Mayor, I know we've got someone working on that and we'll try to get them elevated as soon as we can. So just give us a minute and see what we can do.
That's fine.
I will say I'm really happy that that we're doing this, Emily. Your your organization, the organization that you lead has been doing fabulous work and I do want to get out there and tour, so eventually I will reach out to you when my schedule kind of slows down a little bit and reach out to you so I can tour it. We've got some great restoration projects that are closing up where I work at Jamestown, so this fall, I'll have a little bit more time and so it'll be the first time for me touring the the new facility. So I'll reach out to you, Emily, to to get that taken care of.
I look forward to it. Thank you. And thank you, everybody at the city for your support. I welcome you all to come for a tour. It's a pretty amazing facility and it's brought a lot of smiles to people's faces, so. Been worth it.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought I saw Lindsay pop in there real quick, but I guess he's still having a hard time.
I could throw a little note out there, totally different than the the food bank, but the the bridge at the Dungeness Nature Center, the the new bridge that was put in is now in and it looks like people are starting to use to use it. So as you go across the Dungeness River to go see the nature center, we've got the new railroad bridge placed in there. We still have one more bridge to put in, but it's looking fabulous. I'd love to share a photo, but I'm not going to do that. But go out there and check it out yourself at the Dungeness Nature Center. That restoration project is fabulous and all of the cyclists and runners and walkers will appreciate the the elimination of the the corners that you had to go around to get off the railroad bridge and up onto the Olympic Discovery Trail area. So you'll appreciate the new nice ADA accessible smooth bridge.
Anybody else have any updates on anything that they want to share?
If Lindsay's listening, they did send you an email with a new link. Join the meeting.
I don't see him on the attendee list anymore.
Maybe he's heading over to Norman's office.
I see a box down below. There it is.
All right, you with us, Lindsay?
Yeah, thanks for that hint, Mike. I would not have been checking my email. Thanks.
So should I read this again perhaps or are we we're good? We've already seconded the motion?
I I heard it and I approve as well.
Okay, so yeah, I'll just use unanimous consent since the motion has been made and seconded. Anybody that opposes, please voice your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes. Congratulations, Emily and the Food Bank of Port Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And yep, oh, there goes our mayor. There you go. Take it away, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me unmute myself here. All right. Thank you all for doing that. Let's go back to the top of top-ish of the agenda and go to late items. We have a couple of items from staff. Nathan, do you want to go?
Mayor and Council, we do have two late items for you this evening. The first is a resolution to ratify a declaration of emergency for the water main repair. And there is a resolution for council to approve or to pass. We're going to suggest that that move to resolutions as item H2. Additionally, staff has a late item relative to declaring a stage three water shortage. We're suggesting that move to other considerations as item I4.
All right, thank you. Any late items from council? All right, hearing none, we will add those two. Let's go to the consent agenda. Anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I guess I'll add the two, the emergency water declaration and what was the other one that Nathan just mentioned?
Declaration of emergency for the water main break?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd like to add those, any opposition to adding those to the consent agenda? Okay, let me pull up the late item then just so I can try to.
Mayor, if I could clarify on on the stage three water shortage declaration, I want to provide clarification on that recommendation and that that is to authorize staff to implement stage three once stage three is triggered. It's not intended that we move to stage three tonight. However, we are very close and it's staff's intent to not have to create a special council meeting in order to declare stage three. We're simply asking for council to authorize staff to implement that stage three shortage once the triggers are met.
All right, thank you. I'm going to pull that language from the email that we got regarding late items because I think I want to be sure that the motion in the consent, that the statement in the consent agenda reflects that. So I will go ahead and read the consent agenda. The City Council minutes of September 6, 2022, expenditure report from September 10, 2022 to September 23, 2022, in the amount of $2,371,313.17 Chip Seal Project, CON 2021-15 Final Acceptance, Department of Ecology Puget Sound Nutrient Reduction Grant, the Declaration of Emergency for the Water Main Break and the Resolution authorizing staff to declare a stage three water shortage when that level is reached. Do we have any questions or a motion to approve?
A move to approve?
Second, Navara. Thank you, Navara. All right.
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
We get a very short presentation on stage three water emergency and what that means for residents and what we should all prepare for, please.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Go ahead, Nathan.
We'll have Director Healy help out with that real quick.
Absolutely. Stage three is triggered with with a number of consistent weather patterns where it doesn't look like rain. And we've been at 300 CSF in the river for five consecutive days. It implements some stronger outdoor watering prohibitions and and the like, and we will, we are at three days right now under 300 CSF. And states any outdoor, state street prohibits outdoor restrictions. Water supplies are critically impacted and demand must be reduced, triggers, conditions have worsened, and the level of demand needs to be future reduced. It has things in there such as a prohibition of of a running hose to wash a car as opposed Of a running hose to wash a car as opposed to a bucket with a with a nozzle on it. Limited. Watering of lawns and the like. But once we're there, we will have that up on the website and all the different situations that are that are mandated by the stage three.
All right. Does that answer your question, Lindsay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. All right. So not good news. It's nice to enjoy this like seventy degree weather on Saturdays. But also I keep thinking, yes, and we really need some rain. So fingers crossed that this doesn't last very long. Um, all right. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right, hearing the motion passes unanimously. And we will move on to item I two. This is, there's going to be a presto changeo in Norm's office. We have the Planning Commission recommendations regarding requirements or restrictions on religious organizations practicing their faith by sheltering people experiencing homelessness. And we will go to Norm to kick off that discussion for us. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, last Wednesday evening, staff brought forward to the planning commission. City council suggested changes to the Port Angeles Municipal Code. Regarding the housing of the homeless on property owned by religious organizations. The City Council requested the Planning Commission provide review and recommendations to council. After staff provided the City Council's changes to the Planning Commission. The commissioners then had a very good, robust discussion. After which the Planning Commission unanimously approved these two motions contained in your packet memo. One, Commissioner Schwab motion to recommend to the City Council Alternative One as identified in the September twentieth. Twenty twenty two staff memorandum to City Council. With the suggestion of directing staff to waive permit fees for religious organizations. And streamline review process by utilizing a safety review checklist. Commissioner Smith seconded and the motion passed unanimously. A draft safety review checklist, I believe, is included in your packet. And as an FYI, the city manager is able to waive certain fees. Commissioner Schwab then motioned to recommend to City Council to direct staff to formulate a comprehensive ordinance for supportive housing. Based on solutions implemented in other municipalities. Commissioner Smith seconded and this motion also passed with unanimous consent. While the planning commission has not recommended a change in the language as suggested by City Council. Staff finds there are currently two existing permitting pathways already in place. That staff could assist a religious organization with to provide temporary housing for unhoused people. One, an administrative amendment to the religious organization's existing conditional use permit. Allowing for the use as proposed on the property in perpetuity. Or issuing a temporary use permit utilizing the draft safety checklist. That identifies the location to be used for temporary housing for one year. With the ability to request an extension for a period not to exceed six months. With either of these options, staff also stands by the planning commission's second recommendation. To pursue a larger, more comprehensive municipal code amendment, such as those provided in Alternative Four. The Planning Commission currently has a code amendment for Title seventeen underway. And the second recommendation could be included within that scope of work. Temporary building permits can also be included in the Title seventeen code amendments, including addressing extensions. The Community and Economic Development Department plans to bring these amendment changes forward in March, six months from now. I have. Planning Commission Staff Representative Ben Broderick here, as well as Housing Coordinator Holden Fleming. To answer along with me any questions you might have.
Thank you, Norm, and thank you, Ben and Holden for being here tonight. So let's open it up for council discussion. I don't have my participant list up. Lindsay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm I'm happy with where we've arrived at this, and I think we've got a good solution moving forward. I just wanted to share, just because I think there's some misunderstanding in in how this is presented, because it is a very complex. Legal issue that the city has no power to tell religious organizations how to practice their faith. Or to prevent them from that. And so if religious organizations like churches in our community want to provide shelter for the poor. We can't stop that. We can, however, as a city. Enforce the necessary things that we have an interest in health and safety of the people of Port Angeles. And so the discussion has been how much do we create a process to do that upfront, do that afterward? And I think what we've come up with is a proactive process that should be streamlined for religious organization applicants. And, you know, while I'm concerned about the temporary use permit being temporary. We will have a more, you know, robust system within the lifetime of the first round of permits without any need for extension. During that code change in March, as as Director Gullup said. And so I'm happy with the the Planning Commission's recommendation in the context. And I should say I listened to the Planning Commission meeting. They really wanted us to go a lot further. A number of the Planning Commission members were a little frustrated that City Council was only talking about religious organizations doing this work. They think we need to be much more ambitious in scaling up, I think, as one person said, experimental housing. And so I look forward to the much more comprehensive. Recommendations from the Planning Commission and our staff come March. So just to streamline the process, I'll go ahead and move to adopt the motions provided by the Planning Commission. To make no changes to municipal code at this time, direct our staff to waive permit fees for religious organizations making these applications. And streamline the permanent review process by utilizing a safety review checklist. And direct our staff to formulate a comprehensive ordinance for supportive housing based on solutions implemented in other municipalities. And bring that back to the City Council in March. Thank you.
Second, Brenda.
Hold on one second. I'm just writing that down because you made a couple of modifications and I want to note them. Okay. All right, thank you. Lindsay, I think you spoke to your motion well. Brendan, do you want to go since you seconded?
Uh, yeah, I I think the checklist and and this streamlined process is is good. The recommendations are good. And the addition to having a more. Broad conversation in March, you know, including housing would be appropriate. So thank you.
Good, Brendan. Any other council members wish to speak to the motion? Navara, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to touch on some things that Lindsay talked about. And how, you know, we've received some public comment about. You know, expressing concern about this. And I wanted to. Just expand on what Lindsay was talking about, that this is set forth in state law. That religious organizations have this right to practice their faith through providing. You know, housing options, temporary housing options for people on their properties. So that's in state law and we are upholding that law and making it work for our community in Port Angeles. And I think that that can be evidenced by the fact that, you know, some of the public commenters who have spoken to this. You know, were from diverse organizations like Joe DeScala from 4PA and Susan Helgren from Taffy. And I think that shows that. There are a lot of people who are working on this and who want to push this forward. Because they know that we're in a housing crisis. And I'm really grateful to staff in the Planning Commission for working through. Some of the issues that I think were brought up. And I also feel really positively about this moving forward. I also just wanted to touch on one of the other written public comments we received. And remind people that, you know, we have a code for a reason and people. You know, we have code enforcement to help us enforce that code. And, you know, people are always welcome to reach out to City Council to express their concerns. But code enforcement will also, you know, nobody's above the law, right? And so when we have these opportunities for, you know, anybody in the community, but including religious institutions. If they are also required to comply with, you know, the other. You know, the other things in our code as well, like noise ordinances and things like that. So I just want to assure folks that, you know, this isn't too. I don't think the intention here is to. You know, I don't think the intention of, you know, religious institutions or City Council is to create an unsafe place in people's communities. And because of that, you know, we have a robust police department and code enforcement who do a lot of work. In making sure that our communities are safe and livable for all people. And that if, when, you know, religious institutions in our communities start enacting this, if there are problems. We will work through that in the the legal process that we have in our community, which is through code enforcement. So I just wanted to remind people of that, that I I think that. That should not be forgotten. But again, I did just want to give a big shout out and thank you to our staff for putting in so much time on this. And getting a really quick turnaround and Planning Commission for doing that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Navara. Anyone else speak to this? Mike's thinking about it, I can tell. No pressure. You don't have to, but.
You can go first if you need, if you were going to say something.
I don't have, I'm just, I have some comments, so you can go ahead.
They got in there.
Uh, I just, you know, I. I think a lot of other council members have covered a lot of the points that I was thinking of making. The one email that I thought was really helpful was from, I think, Jim Hagwood, where he talked about some of the safety concerns and thinking upfront. About how things could go sideways and trying to prevent those impacts at the beginning. One thing I would suggest to our staff is. Thinking about like a fact sheet of some sort that provides access to the resources that these churches might need. You know, contacts for rediscovery, the community, the local business community clinic. Resources to code enforcement, to make sure that, you know, understanding that not everything might go perfectly. And providing those resources upfront so that we don't create really negative neighborhood impacts. But I think the complexity of the. Application will will, you know, it's, we're finding a balance here between, we're trying to make. We're trying not to impose restrictions that we legally don't feel like we can impose in many cases. But we also want to protect the safety, health and welfare of all of our citizens, neighbors, including the people that are being temporarily housed. And so I think that the fact that there is somewhat of a significant application probably will deter people that aren't really thinking through the problem seriously. About how can they provide what people would need to live temporarily, you know, on in these places? But like I said, that's the only suggestion I have is make sure that that if someone fills out this this temporary use permit. That we have all the resources they might, you know, need to think through the downstream impacts. Connections to, you know, the community partners that we have that are doing really good work in this area.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else on council want to speak up? Brendan, I see your hand, your hand raised. I'm going to go quickly and then I'll go back to you. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the, definitely appreciate the efforts of staff and the Planning Commission. And I know I voted no on the main motion, on the motion last meeting. And I think there might have been some misunderstanding about my no vote, which probably meant I didn't do a very good job of articulating why I was voting no. Not because I don't think that, I don't, I was not intended to communicate that I want to. Stop religious organizations from doing this if they want to do it. I think we definitely need organizations to step up and provide some. Albeit temporary sheltering slash housing options for people. And I just wasn't a huge fan of the proposed solution. I think this is a a good. Outcome of all of the discussion that we had, and I really appreciate the time and effort that went into it. I appreciate Lindsay bringing it. To our attention as an option, an item to discuss, and I appreciate that we will have the opportunity for some. More in-depth discussion about what we do going forward, which will also allow for the community to be involved in the process. And I think that was the other thing I heard in public comment. Just in the community was, it felt like it was being pushed through really fast. Well, of course, it's in like, this is a really critical situation. And we want people to be able to take action quickly. So I like that this provides a balance of a short-term solution and a long-term solution, which will allow more community engagement. So thank you all for the work on this. And I will go back to Brendan.
Yeah, I just want to to clarify my no vote from last time. Mine was, I think that we're having a housing crisis in general and that we need to act on that in an emergency way. But I think that the Planning. The Planning Commission did a really good job here and this is pretty streamlined. And, you know, I just remind people who are maybe, you know. Disgruntled about the idea of this happening, that there are only twenty churches in the city of Port Angeles. Not all of them are going to attempt to do this. This is a very difficult task. And, you know, by adopting this, we are falling in line with the Constitution and allowing people to practice their religious beliefs. Potentially saving us from billion-dollar lawsuits as well. So I think that's important to remember. And, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome and the participation at the the religious community wants to offer.
Thank you, Brendan. Anyone else want to go again? Go ahead, Lindsay, and then Mike.
I'll just share to council member French's point, the religious organizations that I've talked with or with folks who I've talked with about this. Are are serious about understanding what they're doing and and aren't hastily jumping into something. There's a few resources that I shared with staff after talking to Director Gullup and and Senior Planner Broderick this morning. One is Seattle University School of Law's Homeless Rights Advocacy Project. Paper on advice for religious organizations that are pursuing this work, which I hope that we actually share a link to that with. With folks who who apply for this temporary use permit. And then another is a document I've shared many times before, which is the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness's. Sanctions or caution recommended for cities who are pursuing temporary encampments and other temporary housing solutions. And then finally, that, you know, we started the process in December of last year. Of approving certain kinds of recreational park trailers, the ones that we would think of as tiny houses. That meet a certain ANSI standard as dwelling units in the city. And so I hope that that process will continue as we move forward. In recognizing that, you know, construction costs, especially for things that are not mass-produced in an assembly line fashion. Is really high, that we have to look at more ability to have more small inexpensive housing units. You know, I I exchanged emails with one of the people who wrote us today about this. And, you know, they were feeling frustrated that it seems like nothing is working on homelessness. And, you know, the thing is homelessness was decreasing in Washington between the Great Recession and twenty thirteen. And the reason is that rent wasn't increasing, that people's, you know, real wage relative to their housing cost was not going up like it has since twenty thirteen. And really what's driving homelessness across Washington and in Port Angeles is that the rent is too high. And that is what we can tackle as a city by having more housing units. And it's particularly those small inexpensive housing units. It's something that really kind of only us as a city can tackle. I keep reminding people that the county is responsible for the homeless crisis response system. You know, the shelters and the rental vouchers. We are responsible for the city. And that includes, you know, the way that we do land use planning, the way that we build walkable neighborhoods. And so that really has to be our focus as the City Council. So yes, I look forward to the next round of of. Um, so yes, I look forward to the next round of, of, um, Title 17 changes on next March and, um, the robust discussion leading into this. Let's get to work figuring out how we get, you know, apartments and infill development to make Port Angeles a better place.
Thank you, Lindsay. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to say thanks to Joe DeScala for kind of pushing us on this issue. This is something that he had talked to us offline in person a, a short time back and that he's been working on. So thanks to him and his organization 4PA for kind of putting this on our radar and pushing us on it.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I will just add that I can appreciate that it, um, may feel concerning to people. I think the, the process that the staff has laid out, um, with the planning commission's discussion does a lot to, um, provide good scaffolding for this being done well. And to Lindsay's point, the organizations that are already thinking about it have every intention of being, um, diligent about how they do it and using best practices. And I think there really are, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting. Someone shared an article with us not too long ago about, um, a church, I think it was in Sacramento or someplace in California that did this and how resistant the community was initially. But through a lot of good outreach, the community ended up being a fantastic support for the people who were living in the church lot. Um, they provided meals, they provided clothing, connections for work, et cetera. And so I think, um, you know, my hope is that the communities that surround any churches that do this, um, will take a proactive approach and treat people as neighbors like they would their other neighbors. At least, well, at least I hope that's a positive thing. Um, help ease the burden and, um, be, um, encouraging and supportive. So I think there are great examples of that happening and I hope that we see that here as well and I expect that we probably will. So, um, any last comments, questions? All right, well then let's vote. I think I missed one word, Lindsay, so correct me when I'm done reading, if I missed something substantive. Uh, so we have a motion to adopt the motions provided by the planning commission to make no changes to the municipal code at this time, direct staff to waive permit fees for religious organizations and streamline the permit review process by utilizing a safety review checklist and direct staff to formulate a comprehensive ordinance for supportive housing based on solutions implemented in other municipalities and bring that back to council, uh, in March. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. A lot of.
Thank you all of you, um, on staff for your work on this and I look forward to seeing an application. All right, that brings us to item I three. If I'm following correctly. And that is a, um, discussion on revenue source options and I'm gonna turn that over to Nathan to start.
Mayor and council, tonight we are asking for a follow-up discussion to the July 26th work, work session, where we discussed a number of different revenue options. Um, there's a list in your memorandum of revenue options where we actually saw a consensus among council members of four more council members interested in moving forward with some of those revenue sources. Specifically though, at this time, we would welcome the discussion of all of those revenue sources. However, we're really focused on getting the 2023 budget balanced and therefore wanting to look at options that ensure we move forward in 2023 with a balanced budget and can cover the costs that we currently face. Um, this evening, staff is specifically recommending the inclusion of a fireman's pension property tax levy in the amount of 10 cents for every 1,000 of assessed value. Um, and the total estimated revenue collection from this action would be $244,300. And that helps offset the costs that we experience relative to fireman's pension and left one firefighters, uh, costs that we incur each year. It would also ensure that those costs do not have to come directly from the general fund. So this evening, we're recommending that council actually direct staff to implement necessary, uh, documents and draft, sorry, draft the necessary documents and implement the necessary measures to move forward with the fireman's pension property tax levy in the amount of 10 cents per every $1,000 of assessed valuation and incorporate the associated revenues in the 2023 budget in order to balance it. So council, that's, uh, what we've recommended. There's more detail obviously in the memorandum. I'm sure that both, uh, Director Carazosa and myself can answer any additional questions that council has and happy to see further discussion on the other revenue options as well.
Thank you, Nathan. Um, any questions, thoughts, comments, emotion, anything from council? Where do you guys wanna start? It's a harder one. Right, um, Mike, go ahead.
So just to get it out of the way, I will move, uh, to direct staff to implement necessary procedures to pursue the fireman's pension property tax levy in the amount of 10 cents per every $1,000 of assessed valuation and incorporate the associated revenues in the 2023 budget.
Second, Navara. All right, thank you. Uh, Mike, do you wanna speak to your motion?
Sure. So this is of course something that is a legacy, um, that we've had to deal with for some time and it is something that will end in a certain amount of time as the, um, beneficiaries of that pension, expire. Uh, but, um, I, you know, it, it's something that I think, you know, this is something we've had to live with. Uh, as the packet mentions, we're eligible for something like 20 cents of assessed valuation without voter approval. We've never, to my knowledge, used any of that, um, uh, eligibility. So, uh, you know, I don't like, um, you know, being forced to do this, but this is something that is just, uh, from my perspective, a temporary need that, that we need to make sure that, um, the general fund is not going to be impacted by this pension. Like I said, at some point, this pension will not be a, um, liability that we'll have to worry about.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Navara, do you wanna go?
You don't have. I will. Um, as I said back at the meeting we talked about this at, um, I, I think that it's valuable to give this to the voters. Um, and to, you know, I, I, I think we, I think there is a strong case to pass this levy and I support it. Um, a, and I think that we, that, that this is city council asking our community, if our community supports this, um, for our fireman's pension. And, um, that's one of the reasons why I think, um, why, while, why I will be voting in favor is because this will be going, um, as a levy to our voters rather than city council making. Am I wrong? All right, I'm like, wow, well, never mind.
Yeah, we already, the authorization for a levy of twice that much, but they're suggesting that we, we, then we haven't taken it before. But we're suggesting that through council action, we add, we, we exercise that levy authority.
Yeah, okay, great, okay.
If I can just add one additional fact, my apologies, Navara. Um, just.
Go for it.
Additional fact, um, Director Carazosa did identify today historically, the city of Port Angeles did previously take this and apply it in approximately the nine, early 1990s and it had an expiration date in the early 2000s. So it was applied, um, previously in history for whatever reason it was let to expire and it's something that we're suggesting happen again.
Okay, great. Well, clearly if I was confused, I'm sure I'm not the only person. So, um, I appreciate the clarification. Thanks.
No problem.
Sorry, could we get more clarification on what this would pay for? And what's a pension and who still gets those?
So essentially the, this goes for the cost specifically for fireman's pension and left one, left one medical expenses. And so those generally are older retired firefighters simply because those programs are in past history, they no longer exist today. So you will see a point in time where this can go away, where we no longer have those employees that we have to continue to fund the pension for. We're not there yet, we still have a number of employees there. And perhaps Director Carazosa can clarify approximately how many are remaining in some of the additional pension details.
Sure, um, specifically the fireman's pension levy, um, is used for the use with fireman's pension beneficiaries. And so we currently have, uh, three. We have two, um, former employees and one surviving spouse that are currently on that pension program. And then we have a number of, um, both firefighters or former firefighters and police officers that are on those left one benefits. Um, that's, uh, recent legislation that has expanded the use of that fireman's pension levy to include that left one medical benefits. And so we have quite a few, um, probably around 25 to 30, I'd say, um, on that left one program. And the reason why we've selected the 10 cents, um, Mayor Dexter is correct, we can take up to 22 and a half percent or half cents. And then we've selected 10 cents for every $1,000 of assessed valuation because, um, specifically those left one benefits fall within the general fund. And, um, those estimated costs in 2023 are about $244,000. And so we are recommending that we, we offset that with the fireman's pension levy.
Thank you. Uh, Lindsay, do you wanna speak to this, since you had the question?
Yeah, it's such a great example of, of, you know, where we subsidize and where we see progress and, and loss. I mean, these kinds of pensions, I don't think anyone at the city is getting this anymore. And at the time, it probably seemed like a good idea. And it's great for those, you know, three, three employees or former employees and spouse. But, you know, like when we, it, it was based on this idea that we would always have continuing expanding prosperity. And I think the whole discussion today about, you know, utility rates and being able to pay for, um, deferred assets of men, of deferred asset ma- maintenance and, and everything is just underlying how challenging it is to make these policy decisions when they affect people over time, right? Like, we're trying to make decisions that are gonna do right for people in Port Angeles 20 years from now. And, you know, that hopefully is gonna say, they're gonna look back and say, oh, 20 years ago, we're glad that the, the council and the city staff did the things they did. Um, I look back and I say, did, how, how are people today in Port Angeles who, you know, and I joke, you know, what's a pension? But like literally, most people in Port Angeles are, are never gonna have to figure out the fine print of a pension because most people aren't gonna get it. And, um, here we are though, paying for past policies that, um, we really, I mean, obviously we, we don't have the means of paying for. So it's, I think, a sobering opportunity for us to reflect on the responsibility of the decisions we make today and not burdening future generations, um, of Port Angeles residents with the decisions that we make that aren't good. Um, you know, it's a, it's a big task before all of us, um, who are in this meeting, whether we're on the council or on our staff, we're listening in the audience. Thanks.
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, before I go back to you, Mike, I wanna see if anyone else would like to speak to this. Then raise your real hand if I can see you. Go ahead, Latricia.
I, I just, I, I, I guess maybe I'm, I'm, my question is if this doesn't pass, or you know, what are the other options for funding this shortfall? That, that's all I wanna know. I mean, is there a set, is there a backup option? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I would, I would go back to, uh, the revenue options presentation and discussion, um, that occurred at the end of July. Um, the council consensus items were included in the city council memo, um, that's in your packet this evening. And so we would be looking at exploring some of those options. And I think as you consider those options, it's important to note that a number of them require voter approval. It's, um, the reason why we have elected to use a one-time use of reserves to balance the remaining portion of the budget, to allow council time to consider those options for what you would like to bring forward for consideration on, on the balancing piece. So if the fireman's pension tax were not to move forward, we would be dipping below our reserve of the required reserve 25% if we wanted to take that approach. Or we'd be exploring, um, one of those other revenue options to include in the budget. Um, if we wanted to focus on revenues. Um, the other option would be to look at, um, budgetary cuts essentially in the expenditures.
So, so then one more question. What is the sunset on the proposed, i- is there a proposal on the sunset for the levy? Lit or for the proposal tonight?
Yeah, so there is a little bit of flexibility there. We can build in, um, a sunset similar to, um, what Manager West was describing previously. Um, in the mid 90s, I believe, there was a 10-year sunset on that, that property tax levy. Um, so something similar to that could, um, could be considered in the approach. Um, per, uh, the R C W, that pen, or that levy cannot be, um, taken um, once there are no more, um, former employees as beneficiaries on the fireman's pension plan. Um, so that, that is another option to just leave it in place until that occurs.
So the, you, you specifically identified the fireman's pension, but you also have this other one, the medic, what do you call it, medic one?
Uh, the left one.
Left one, sorry. I knew there was a one in there.
Yeah.
Is it right or left? I don't know. So, but if there's still, uh, there's still employees in that, does it still sunset after there's no more?
Yeah, and the allowable uses are for the pension and for left one. Um, however, the, the levy is tied to the pension program.
All right, more food for thought.
And council, just another important fact is that the fireman's pension and the left one benefits are actually set by the legislature.
Great. So they're not making new pension funds. The legislature is not creating new pension funds. Thank goodness. Um, okay, uh, let me just.
But they are, but they are potentially increasing benefits.
Right, well, right. We'll wait and see. Um, Charlie or Brendan, do you wanna chime in, either one of you? All right, um, I will just say, um, you know, certainly, it always gives us pause, I think all of us, um, certainly gives me pause when we talk about increasing property tax. And I think it always just reminds me of why we continue to ask the state to change the way we fund everything. Um, because it leaves us with very few tools to meet the demands of the city and the, we wanna, we have to have a balanced budget and we consistently are left with regressive options to meet those shortfalls. And so, um, I just appreciate that we continue to push for something that looks a little bit different. Um, so that we have more options. Um, but short of that, I think, um, it is appropriate to, to fund the fund um, and appreciate that it is one that, that has some natural end of life. Um, and that it is something that we can take away either on our own or will just end up going away because it's no longer, that, because there isn't anyone on the pension. So I appreciate that this was an option brought by staff and I appreciate that it is, um, very thoughtfully proposed and not just, hey, let's take all of it, but this is really the amount we need, um, to try to keep that, um, low, um, for our residents. So I appreciate that. Um, and I will support it. Anyone else? Go ahead. Oh yeah, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
It's okay. Um, so the way I understand it right now, we are not setting a sunset.
I don't think we hea- heard, cause I, I think, uh, we did not direct a sunset in this. So, and I guess staff can speak to that maybe better.
So council, I would recommend that we explore that as part of putting together the documents and the necessary process on this. This simply gives us indication that yes, this is something council wants to see us move forward with. We then put together the work product to actually execute on that. We then put together the work product to actually execute on that and move it forward. And then ultimately, we can work on an appropriate sunset time as part of that product.
Great.
As well as incorporate in the twenty, sorry, as well as incorporate it in balancing the twenty twenty-three budget, of course.
Great. So, yeah, I definitely support that. I would say that, you know, my reading of the packet is that we're still going to be subsidizing this with general fund dollars. So this is, you know, not even really, I mean, part of me wants to say is ten cents enough. At the same time, I want to be sensitive to our taxpayers. But I'll say, if, if there are members of the public that want to criticize this council for this, for, you know, a, a really very small property tax increase so that we can fund the pensions and retirement and health benefits of first responders and their, their widows and spouses, I will take that criticism. I would say that I would want this to sunset when, when it's no longer legal for us to do this. Meaning that when those three pensioners finally expire. And then hopefully we'll have a conversation right after this about some of these other revenue options.
Thank you, Mike. Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to state that, you know, pensions aren't a bad thing. I think people who devote twenty or thirty years of their life to public service or whatever deserve a pension. I think it's just the state of our crumbling healthcare system that makes it outrageous to support pensions now. And we need to fix that. So pensions aren't bad. Our healthcare system is terrible.
Thank you, Brendan. Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, at the risk of my prior sarcasm being taken out of context, I meant to say what Deputy Mayor Meyer just said. And I think to channel our former city manager, may these people live long and incredibly healthy lives. And when they pass away, it happens very suddenly.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right. So let's vote on this and then we can have a little more discussion if we want about the other options. So we have a motion to direct staff to implement necessary procedures to pursue the fireman's pension property tax levy in the amount of ten cents per every one thousand of assessed valuation and incorporate the associated revenues in the twenty twenty-three budget. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. Right, hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Mike, do you want me to go back to you since you indicated an interest in discussing some of the other options?
Yeah, the one that I think that we should have conversations with, with our Chamber of Commerce is that border, border area fuel tax. When I was the chamber representative, so many times Railroad Avenue came up as a really critical capitalist, capital facilities plan project that they felt was not moving forward, that obviously we know is going to take a very considerable lift if we want to see improvement into the road structure. And that border area fuel tax was, in my mind, a viable, direct funding source for those kind of improvements. I would not want to move that forward without explicit support from our Chamber of Commerce, or at least, I don't know, I, I really, I, I don't know how to say that, but I would want to take it to our chamber, see if they had any thoughts on it, and then see if they wanted to push us towards that one. Yeah.
I think I might have been unmuted and unmuted myself, sorry. Can I ask a quick point of clarification? And it's probably right in front of me, but just out loud. Does the fireman's pension property tax levy levy get us to a balanced budget with that nominal amount from reserves? Do we need more, I guess, is my, I'm happy to discuss more, but do we need more? Or does that solution get us where we need to be?
So council, we will absolutely need more for future budgets. And I think the frustrating and challenging part, right, is that we have substantial need in some of our departments right now for additional resources that we're not able to afford right now. And I think many of those resources are things that council members have specifically desired and asked for. I think a good example is the tech position that we talked about last year and finding a way to permanently fund that. I think there is more that we need to be able to afford in order to serve this community well. And I think that's critically important that we continue to explore some of these options to make sure that we're being responsible to the community for future generations, taking care of our existing infrastructure and doing everything that we can to create a better community. And Director Carazozza may have additional input that she wants to share.
No, I mean, I agree with Manager West, but just looking at the immediate need for twenty twenty-three. The fireman's pension levy does get us to a balanced budget with the roughly two, well, two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars from the use of reserves, and that's excess reserves. So that maintains our twenty-five percent fund balance. It actually draws us downright to it. And we do anticipate that that would be one time with the exploration of revenue options for future budgets.
Thank you. Okay, thoughts from council? Do we want to continue this conversation right now or do we want to put it on a future agenda to continue to explore these other options for long-term versus immediate need? Why don't I ask that in a way that everyone can answer? Thumbs up if there is a desire to continue this discussion tonight? All right. I only see one thumb. So we will continue this discussion for the long-term health at a, maybe at a November meeting so that it doesn't get too far and we don't miss a potential election cycle window if we decide we wanted to, if we decided we wanted to go ahead with voter-approved items. Does that work for staff?
Here it does.
Okay. All right, so let's, we'll move on from this, but we will continue to discuss at a future council meeting. Thank you, council. All right, that brings us to council reports unless I'm missing something. Because we put the late items in the consent agenda. So let's go from the bottom of the list to the top of the list. And that means we start with Navara. Go ahead, Navara.
Well, I was trying to like rack my brain to think about the things I've done in the last two weeks and I cannot come up with one. Other than I am the new, I, in my personal capacity, I am now serving on the PA Fine Arts Center board in my, so that is my personal thing, but I did just want to mention it because the city does certainly have, you know, a lot of interaction with the Fine Arts Center. And so there may be times in the future when I will be recusing myself because of, of that. And so I will just share that there are many fun things happening in that capacity, at that institution, including their, you know, like fall, I think, you know, event on the twenty-second with pumpkin carving contests and lots of fun activities for the whole family. So I think that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Navara, and congratulations for joining a great, a board of a great organization. All right, Mike, go ahead.
All right, so I attended the Clalum Transit Board Meeting for Lindsay. We approved an extension of the employment agreement with the general manager, Kevin Galacy, who got really stellar marks from their review committee on his job performance as that agency has just been making really great strides over the last few years. They have a fair free service a few days, I think, next week, October thirteenth through fifteenth, well, maybe it's the week after next. Everything except the stray shot, of course. And then we discussed the plans for continued service to Hurricane Ridge for next year. We felt like, they felt like this season, it was a great success. And they definitely had a lot of lessons learned that I think will make that service even better for next year. The one thing that they remarked was it would be really great if somebody would park a food truck in the gateway because there's just not all that much time for the people getting off the ferry from Victoria to get on the bus to Hurricane Ridge. And there's just, you know, anyway, a food truck would be great if anybody wants a business idea for next summer. This Thursday, just in a couple of days, the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission will be hosting the regional administrator for the Washington State Department of Transportation, Steve Rourke. And he's going to give us a short presentation and, and take some questions regarding Hood Canal Bridge repair closures that are scheduled for next year. I'm the chair of the meeting. If anybody wants to attend virtually, you can email me and I can get you the Zoom link. But we, we hope that this is the start of a conversation with the Department of Transportation because they have a lot of very impactful actions, as we all know, over the next few years that are going to impact a lot of events and tourism-related things. So our tourism commission sent that letter that I think our council received and signed on to. And we felt that, that Steve was very responsive. And he's, we're very glad that he's going to come to our meeting so that we can have a open community discussion with him. The, we did, our, Marcia did reach out to a lot of different community members to make sure that, as many people know, so, you know, we have quite a few people in our attendee list already that can ask, ask him some good questions. Ghostlight Productions is having their Board of Directors annual meeting this Sunday, three o'clock at their studio downtown. I'm not on their board, but I do have a good relationship with some of their board members. If, if you want to attend, they have free tickets at ghostlightwa.org. They have a capacity limit that they don't want to over, over. And they're going to be talking about their plans for the Lincoln Theater and their overall outlook for next year. One thing that, you know, has been really great to see with Field Hall moving towards opening is I think that we're kind of on the edge of a real, you know, artistic revolution here for our, our arts economy. And I think Ghostlight is going to be a part of that. And then on a lighter note, there was a free speech case concerning parody on the United States Supreme Court's docket. And the satire news website, The Onion, submitted an amicus brief. So if anybody wants to read just the introduction to it, it will be worth your time. It's amazing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. We go next to Lindsay.
Thank you. I'm, I'm curious about that, Mike, but I'm probably not going to get to it. I just want to clarify, our policy for meeting in person versus virtual is based on the COVID rate. And we're right now sitting halfway in the medium range. Once we drop out of medium, under our current policy, we will then have in-person and virtual meetings. So we will get there. It's just a question of when, and we're basing that on the science of how, how at risk we are as a community. Even though many of us are getting the Omicron variant vaccine and unfortunately potentially getting laid up for a day because of it. You know, we still are floating in the middle of that, that medium risk, and that means that masks are still recommended for everybody in public. I appreciate the multiple emphasize, the council's multiple emphasis on the housing crisis today. And we really have to, to move on that, you know, as, as some recent data in land use planning has come out of central, well, the most populous counties in the Peaches Sound area. It's a ninety billion dollar problem in Washington State, which, as I pointed out before, you know, in our new favorite public policy unit is only two-thirds of a Bezos. So when we think about where the wealth is, we have the wealth to solve these problems. We're just not making the people who owe our communities that wealth pay what they truly owe. So one of the things that is going to be a topic in the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda or legislative session is a wealth tax on multimillionaires and billionaires to make them pay one percent of their total earnings. I shared some data on that with the rest of the council. I want to share that here in the meeting so that everybody knew about that. We have in the past put in adequate and non-regressive tax structure at the top of our legislative agenda, and I think we should do that again. Because it's dishonest for us as a local government to say, hey, state, we need more money. But then say, but, you know, we, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to be involved in, in the dirty business of taxes that is necessary to raise that money in order to do the things we need to do. I, I brought this up at our, at our Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, PRTPO, Legislative Priorities Discussion. And people were like, we don't want to get into politics. We just want the state to give us money to fix the roads. And it's like, is that really fair for us to say, you know, we want your money, but we don't want to know how you got it? No, you know, and, and I think as a city saying an adequate tax structure, which means the state needs to raise enough revenue to pay for what it needs. Because we know going upstream, I mean, things like permanent supportive housing are actually way more cost-effective than sending people over and over to the emergency department and/or to the jail. And yet, that's what we do because we don't have enough housing for people with serious mental illness in our community. So, you know, the solutions are actually much more cost-effective if we could just get them in place. And instead, we can't afford them because we don't have an adequate tax system at the state level. The other part of that is non-regressive. I mean, this conversation tonight has also been about, you know, putting the burden on the people who have the least ability to pay. In Washington State, the poorest twenty percent pay seventeen percent of their income in taxes, while the top one percent of people in Washington pay three percent of their income in taxes. It's, it's not even a flat tax. It's incredibly regressive. And so, yeah, I look forward to us talking about our legislative agenda as we get closer. But obviously, the legislative session is, you know, approaching whether we're talking about it or not. And so I think it's valuable for us to have these conversations. So the main thing I want to share in my council report is about Association of Washington City's legislative priorities, which the AWC Board approved a week or so ago. And they basically adopted the Legislative Priorities Recommendations, Legislative Priorities Committee's recommendations. So I was part of the committee and on the board representing our region is Port Townsend Deputy Mayor Amy Howard. So there's several areas where this is relevant to things that we're doing as a city. I forwarded that whole document, I think, to, to most of the staff, leadership team and the city council so that everybody has it. If you don't, please let me know and I can send it to you. But I think, you know, we, we should put AWC's legislative priorities as our legislative priorities as well so that when we speak to them in the legislative session, we can speak on behalf of the city. I think that's a valuable thing for us to do. And we've done that with the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance priorities as well, which is also valuable. So places where they intersect, a big part of the conversation is about some of the police reform measures that happened over the previous couple of years in the state legislature, particularly vehicle pursuits, which City of Port Angeles has been continuing to do vehicle pursuits under the new law. Many other localities are saying, oh, we can't do this. And they're letting violent offenders go, even though they have authority to pursue for a violent crime. This came up in the Legislative Priorities Committee meeting. I raised this issue. They gave examples. I said, that's a violent crime you can pursue. And people apparently don't know the law. I thought they should get better legal counsel. I told them that. Didn't really matter. This still rose to kind of the top priority for many local governments and is on the priorities list for AWC. That's fine, though, because we can weigh in with our experience. And we know that, you know, from the reports from our police chief, that we've continued to do vehicle pursuits. And sometimes even when we have the lawful authority to do it, we don't because it's not safe. Sometimes when we have lawful authority to do it, a bystander is, is involved. And, you know, there's, it just emphasizes the danger of this activity. But we're making the calculation on the ground and deciding, you know, is it safer to pursue or not pursue, given the prospective harm that could happen if we don't pursue? So I think we have done a good job of nuancing the policy and can help to speak to, you know, what reforms would help have other people understand how to make it more useful. The other thing that's a huge topic at, for many cities is having alternative response teams. That's the phrasing from the AWC Legislative Priorities. We're doing that. We're doing that with community paramedicine, and we're doing that in the partnership with the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic and the Rediscovery We're doing that. We're doing that with Community Paramedicine, and we're doing that in the partnership with the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic and the Rediscovery Program. So, um, you know, obviously, some of our staff and OPCC spoke at the last Association of Washington City's Conference. So they're already tapped and probably already going to be on the roster for, um, speaking to the legislature about the value of those programs. So that is also high priority. I think many cities are interested in what, uh, what we're doing. And, you know, I'm, I'm interested in seeing how we expand what we're doing. I really hope that we can get to the point where we dispatch a crisis response unit through nine-one-one and have that as an available option. The other area that is high priority for AWC is infrastructure funding, fully funding the Public Works Assistance Account, boring stuff like that, that, you know, comes back to bite us if we don't act on it proactively, as we know from the planning work that we're doing, like the pavement preservation plan, um, and other plans. And then housing, supporting a proactive approach to creating new tools, incentives and revenues for cities to use to support increasing housing supply and addressing affordability. And that is also on the high priority list. So I wanted to share those because, um, it's, it's a place where we can really affect a lot of change using our positions, whether it's, you know, as a city staff person or as a city council member, to help the legislature understand what we're dealing with. I've said before that I, I was really frustrated when I first joined City Council, that I was here to change the Port Angeles Municipal Code. Thank you very much. That's it. And why am I going to lobby other lawmakers when I myself am a lawmaker? I've since learned that my role is not to change the municipal code. Um, our staff would like to do that. Thank you very much. And, but we can have a big influence on the state legislative process. So I hope that everybody, um, is looking forward to that and happy to talk more about how we do that. But AWC is done with their priorities, um, and I think that we should adopt them when we get around to it for ours. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Lindsay. Latricia?
All right. Thank you. Um, I attended the Williams Shaw Memorial Pool, um, Board Meeting. There, again, their, their childcare, um, is full. They've got baby kids. They are still in need of swim instructors. So if somebody out there is a great swim instructor and, you know, wants something to do. There is, um, on October thirtieth, a dive-in movie. They'll be showing, I believe it's the original Hocus Pocus. So, so that's an upcoming fun event that they're planning. Fall weekends are picking up. I believe, starting November first, um, there is going to be, um, a fee increase for, um, users. I believe it's an overall an eight percent increase. So I think the, when you go to pay to swim, it's like a twenty-five cent increase for, um, you know, like if you're a student, um, I don't know the exact, um, numbers off the top of my head. Um, I'm sorry about that. Starting November first, you will start to see some user fee increases. Again, it's just a reflection of the economy throughout. The majority of the cost for the pool is, um, staff. And, um, also there's an increase in insurance costs for, for the pool, which is based on, um, users. Um, and so now that we're open up full-time, um, compared to when we were shut down, um, for construction, there was an increase on insurance costs. But it was a good, uh, meeting. Again, the pool is used a lot and appreciated by our community members. I did attend a, a Washington, Indian Washington Health Authority, um, Commission Meeting. I was invited to, and one of the things that came out of that meeting, and I even, um, asked, at the meeting with, um, the, the folks that attended is how do city local governments, um, coordinate and work better with tribal governments to help people who are homeless within the community? These are their tribal citizens, but yet we want to be able to. Is, um, I, I think that there's things that we can do better. There's a lot of good stuff out there. Um, there, there is a law, it's called the Joel's Law, where tribes can actually involuntarily, um, appeal to the courts to seek, um, help for a person. In cases where they're just, i- i- it's a life, um, situation where they're just not making decisions for themselves. But I, I think that there is a lot out there that we could do better as a city to coordinate with our local tribal governments to, um, help provide services to members that, are living off the reservation. Um, you know, we, we still have a lot, several homeless people within our community. And working with this group, um, you know, will, will help. I mean, you know, working with Washington State Health Authority, and working with these tribes. I mean, they, they are trying to pass legislation to make it easier so that they can help the people who are vulnerable. But I think it's something that we need to keep on our radar. And with rediscovery and what we're doing on, in, in the field, um, and that we should connect with, um, this group also to see how we can do better out in the field. There are some training opportunities, um, in regards to self-governance that, um, I, I, I hope that we can, um, maybe bring into our area and provide some training opportunities on this topic and how we can coordinate better and what laws are out there that will allow, um, tribal governments and local jurisdictions to work together for the benefit of our vulnerable, um, folks that, um, are, you know, making decisions that are impacting their health and their safety. So that was a, um, a, a great, uh, meeting to attend. Other than that, um, sorry, work and other committee obligations have kept me busy. But I did attend the Claloon County, um, meeting on, uh, business meeting on Monday. That was a good meeting. Um, they, they did, um, approve, um, and moved to Tuesday's meeting, I believe it was, the agreement, um, with the City of Port Angeles on the EOC. So, um, that, that was a great, um, meeting. Happy to sit in on that, but I was also sitting in on that meeting for another reason too, so related to my job. All right. Thank you. Also, thanks, staff, everybody. You know, you guys have, um, you know, pulled through. We, we've got some interim directors. Um, Mike Healy, the first time I've seen you tonight. Welcome aboard. Norm, I really appreciate all that you, you've done stepping in and, um, filling those shoes. And Serena, great, um, presentation, um, tonight. Also want to just state for the high school thespians, they are preparing for, um, a play, um, this fall, I believe, Little Women. So everybody who, who likes to attend school plays, um, that will be coming out soon. And also, it's so, um, I'm happy to see our youth out playing soccer and, um, being active in our community. So thanks to all those coaches, the referees, um, that volunteer their time to, to make that happen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Latricia. Charlie, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, we had family here over the week and I didn't get to attend any meetings. I am still a bit in, in shock a bit. We've had a, our grandson was born in the pre, right as the pandemic set in, so we got to see him for the first time as he's just turned three years old. So, um, still pretty exhausted over having a three-year-old in the house. We typically have an empty house all the time, so, uh, pardon me for still being a bit exhausted tonight. Uh, and I am interested, when you do your report, did the Fiero Center, was that fundraiser successful? I was just curious about that. I apologize if you've shared that already.
All right, um. Is that all, Charlie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. I didn't want to cut you off. Uh, Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, don't really have a lot. Um, I did get to attend the, uh, Fall Festival at Peninsula College, which is a lot of fun. Uh, it was my first time attending that, so, uh, my daughter had fun and my partner had fun as well. I think just to respond to Lindsay's, uh, thing, you know, taxes do need to be, uh, fixed in the state. But also, you know, our federal dollars would, would go a lot further if we weren't dropping forty-six bombs a day on, uh, people who live in other countries, uh, seven to be precise. So, yeah, maybe we get, get rid of congressional people who, uh, keep going and taking money from the military-industrial complex. So, uh, I could see that happening. Uh, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. So, um, I worked at the Fall Spectacular at the college since that is my place of employment. And it was the most people I've ever seen on campus. I actually spent most of my time in the nursing lab because we were giving tours, but, um, ventured out at one point to get some lunch and was really impressed with how many people were there. And Brendan, it was everyone's first time because it was the first time we've ever done it. So I look forward to you joining us next year, um, for, uh, reprisal of that event, which I assume, based on its success, will happen again. And one of the things that's just really cool about it is, I think, so often we forget that the college is, like, we know that it's there, but then you forget how beautiful the campus is and we've, I heard from so many people comments like that. And really, one of the goals is to remind people that we're there and that Peninsula College might be the place for them, no matter their age. So, um, we have lots of cool programs and have, uh, started community education again. The only Pharaoh event that I can think of, Charlie, that you might refer to, was the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner Barbecue. And that happened during a council meeting, so I wasn't there, um, but I think it was a success. And of course, it's always nice when organizations take the time to thank the people who spend a lot of time making their organization great because certainly Pharaoh, um, the volunteers make a big difference for people who are visiting and allow them to have a great experience. So always nice to be able to thank them. I will be, as I mentioned to Francis, uh, participating in the opening ceremonies, for lack of a better term, for Crab Fest on Saturday morning. And, um, Latricia mentioned soccer. My life is football right now. It is homecoming week for the high school. Um, so if you are inclined towards sports, a particularly fun halftime show at the football game this Friday. And we will be, um, at Civic Field with smaller people, um, not always smaller, but younger people, um, during the day on Saturday. Um, and I think I will just leave it at that for now. Um, and we have time to go to City Managers' Report before we do public comment. Go ahead, Nathan.
So Mayor and Council, a few things for you this evening. First, I wanted to make sure everyone has on their calendar, October twenty-fifth, from five PM to seven PM, we will have a City Council Work Session to go over the 2023 budget, as we normally do. And it's going to be a good walkthrough of, of that budget. And, uh, we hope to get that budget out, um, well before that particular work session. In addition, um, I want to share that staff did attend the Board of Natural Resources Meeting this morning with the hope to provide public comment. In fact, signed up to provide comment at that meeting. It's going to be quite important that we follow through with the issue on the Aldwell, timber sale and making sure that we follow through on that, as well as overall protect, um, the watershed of the Elwha River as we move forward with that. So that was our intent, to follow what's been going on. We did, did have someone in attendance. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make comment. Additionally, um, Council, I want to share that we'll be bringing forward, uh, for discussion Legislative Priorities at your October eighteenth Council Meeting. And that doesn't mean we have to have things finalized, but it's a great starting point for discussion. And I know Councilmember Sherman Warren has, uh, shared some details on that this evening, as well as the AWC priorities via email, so we should all have those to look at, and I think that'll be helpful to that conversation. I want to take the time to just say thank you to the hard work, um, that has been put. Thank you to our Public Works crews for the hard work that was put forward relative to the water main breaks. And I really appreciate, um, Director Healy's response to that and his hard work, uh, over the weekend to really help our customers and go a long way, uh, to do everything we can to continue to serve, even though we had an infrastructure challenge there. And I don't know if Director Healy has additional information he wants to add quickly on that, but I think, um, if so, feel free to do so.
Thank you, Manager. I, I, um, you know, the guys have worked sixteen, seventeen hours a day notifying people, setting up alternative, uh, water sites, passing out bottles of water. I've been there, uh, cheering them on and keeping them going. We, our contractor started this morning at seven o'clock in the morning, uh, worked till about an hour ago. Thought we had it repaired. We recharge the line and there's a break a little bit further down. So, uh, unfortunately, we won't be getting water back tonight, but our estimate was tomorrow. Contractor will be there again at seven in the morning, and we should have this buttoned up at some point tomorrow. So apologies to our many customers. We, you know, I, as, as someone that's been without water in the past, I know how they're feeling. Uh, I wish we could flip a switch and, and get them back in service, but, uh, we will very, very soon. We've got a good handle on this, thanks to the hard work of the field crews. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or, um, if, if they're already.
It sounds like the area, um, up behind the college has water again, but the area by Golf Course Road doesn't? Like, it's about half the area is restored now?
That's right. The area, uh, that you're speaking of was in low water pressure. The back tees came back today. So, um, we lifted, um, we lifted the, uh, the boil order in some areas up that way. Golf Course Road is, is still, uh, without water. That's served directly from that, uh, twenty-inch transmission line.
And was, what was the cause of this, this failure?
It's hard to say. There's been, there's been some other breaks in that, in that area there. There, you know, when I look at, at the degradation of the concrete and the, uh, and some of the, where there, were other breaks in the asphalt material that, uh, causes a buffer between the soils. The erosion or the, the, uh, degradation of, of that material would appear that there's some pretty hot soils in that area, which wouldn't surprise me, given the location.
Can I just ask, hot soils, sounds like a term of art that I'm not familiar with.
I'm sorry, just, uh, soils that aren't conducive with metals.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Nathan, are you done with your report?
I am done. Thank you.
Okay, I just, um, realized that, um, I did not state for the record why I was recusing myself from the food bank, uh, item. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, if anyone's still paying attention at this point, that, um, really, uh, based on appearance of fairness, I don't, appearance of fairness, I don't have any, um, financial ties to the food bank, but my sister-in-law is the executive director. And so it just seems like a good idea to, seemed like a good idea to remove myself from the discussion, given, um, the close relationship between myself and the recipient of the funds, if that was the decision. So I just wanted to make that clear to people, um, why I chose to recuse myself from that item. And with that, let's go to the last, uh, second public comment period. We've lost a few participants, but, um, if anyone who is still in attendance would like to speak, same procedure as last time, you can raise your virtual hand and we'll call it, we'll, you will be unmuted. The system will tell you you're unmuted and then, um, you can make sure we can hear you, and then I will start your three-minute timer. And if you can start with name and whether or not you're a city resident, that would be great. And I will just pause for a moment to see if anyone raises their hand. I, I don't see any raised hands, so, um, I, I don't see any raised hands, so, um, I think with that, um, we will go ahead and be adjourned, and we will see you all, um, if not before, at the next council meeting on October eighteenth. Thank you all for a good meeting tonight, and have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.